Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is August 6, 2024. The time is 9:32. I would like to call Father Charles Cannon from St. Hillary's Episcopal Church for the invocation. Please rise, everyone.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we gather here today in a spirit of service and dedication to our community. We ask for your guidance as we undertake the important work before us. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that are just and fair, the courage to address the challenges we face, and the compassion to serve all residents of Lee County with integrity and respect. May our deliberations be marked by cooperation and understanding, and may we always seek the greater good. We pray for the strength to pursue what is right and for the patience to listen to all sides of each argument with open hearts. Bless our county and bless all who count at home. In your name we pray.
Thank you, sir. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. Okay, we have a ceremonial this morning. I have a ceremonial presentation this morning. I would like to recognize Commissioner Pendergrass for Pet of the Month.
Great, thank you, Chairman. If I could have Karen and Pablo come forward. And this is Domino. Everybody likes Domino's, right? So. Make us some friends.
She picked her owner. She's just gonna stay right there.
Domino.
So. Well, let him have his stage. I mean, this is. Domino is a little mix of a little bit of American Bulldog, get some Frenchie Dog.
Yep.
A little bit of American Bulldog, some Frenchie in there.
Yep.
He's a year old. He's looking for a good home. And Karen's got a lot of good things to talk about. You know, one of our animal services do. We find homes for pets throughout the county, and anybody is welcome to come down. We always have specials. I think last month we adopted 292 pets.
We did. We had a great adoption month last month.
292 animals found homes here in Lee County. So, thank you to all your staff. So, if you could tell us what's going on right now.
So, right now, we're running the Adoption Olympics, and Domino is our gold medalist in cuteness today, as you can tell, obviously. So, if you go on our Facebook page, you can look at all the cute videos we've had of our winners. And all dogs are $20 with an approved application, and cat and kittens are $10, and always adopt one, get a feline friend, and no additional charge. We never do BOGO. So, come on down for the next two weeks. It goes to the 15th, and then on the 17th is our Clear the Shelters. That's our biggest event with NBC2 and Telemundo. So, that's a great day, fun day, where adoption fees are waived with an approved application, of course. This Thursday is our Vaccine Clinic at Waukahatchee Recreation Center. Vaccines are free to the residents that come on out. And then next month will be in Boca Delia for our Vaccine Clinic.
We've got a lot of cats right now?
Yes. So, kitten season's still going on, folks, so come on down.
Plenty of cats that come down.
We do. Yes, we do. Yep, that's why they're adopt one, get a feline friend.
Well, thank you to you, all your staff.
Thank you.
For finding homes for those.
Yes, so anybody that wants to come on down for Domino. And Domino's a girl. She just has a boy's name.
Oh.
Yeah.
She's adorable.
She is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, I'd like to add, I adopted one of those cats a few weeks ago.
Oh, Commissioner Greenwell adopted a cat a few weeks ago.
I did, a few weeks ago, so.
It happens a lot. Usually before the animal leaves there, somebody in the staff usually adopts the one that comes down that day.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Commissioner Greenwell.
Yeah. Okay, that concludes the presentations of this morning, so let's move to the recap. At this time, we will take up the recap. There are two items to defer. Consent item number 26 and 29 will be heard on August the 20th. Is there a motion?
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion, a second from Commissioner Sandelli, a motion from Commissioner Hammond. Would anyone like to speak on the motion to defer on 26 and 29 at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Any further discussion? We have motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any objections? Seeing none, motion approves, five to zero. Next, under revision and corrections, county administration would like to revise item number five by adding documentation. Is there a motion to approve?
I move the item.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Anyone wish to speak on that motion? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Commissioner Pendergrass moves the motion. We have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussions or any objections? No. Do we have any public comment on item five? I asked for it, I thought.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, item, item. Any objections? No objections. Item moves five to zero, to move item five. Okay, moving to the consent agenda. Commissioner Hammond, do you have any items to pull?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pendergrass?
No items.
Commissioner Sandelli?
No items.
Commissioner Wayne?
No items.
I have none. We were.
Make a motion to approve the balance of items?
Second. We have a motion to move the consent agenda from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Anyone wish to speak at this time? Marsha Ellis.
Good morning, Commissioner. Marsha Ellis, for the record. So, this agenda that is before us and these consent items is different than what I have been reviewing in anticipation of the regular Board of County Commissioners meetings resuming. Quite honestly, I haven't been able to review it completely. Like many people throughout the county, I'm experiencing some service interruption from the recent tropical storm that has impacted our area, and so I have not been given proper notice to review these items. I have been watching carefully and been researching, for instance, the well field that has been proposed up to the north with concern that exposing that lower Hawthorne member could introduce a lot of arsenic into the public water supply. And I truly do need more time to be able to review these consent items than what has been afforded to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Would any, I have a ton of cards, so I may have a few mixed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the consent agenda at this time?
On which one?
Consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. We have a motion from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Any further discussion? Seeing none, any objection? Seeing no objections, consent agenda moves unanimously five to zero. Okay, that concludes this consent agenda. At this time, I would like to reconvene as a Port Authority Board. I would like to recognize our Port Authority Attorney to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Board members sitting as the Port Commissioners. This is a proposed amendment to the current labor agreement between the Board of Port Commissioners and the Fraternal Order of Police Commissioners. We engaged in collective bargaining through the union's right to reopen on the issue of wages. They had initially sought a 3% retroactive to October 1st. We finally settled on and agreed to, tentatively agreed to, subject to this board's approval, a 3% wage increase effective July 1st of this year. So, it'll be in effect for just the last quarter of this fiscal year. The union approved the proposal. I believe the vote count was 26 to 2, and we respectfully request approval as presented in your backup material. And I and your Port Director are here if you have any questions regarding this matter. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will call for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment.
Move the item.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, any objections? No objections. Item moves five to zero, unanimous. This time, I would like to reconvene as the Lee County Board of Commissioners. We will now move to the administrative agenda. Item two, Mr. County Manager, please introduce item number two to the administrative agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. This item is to consider acquisition of two Conservation 2020 parcels recommended by Class Act, and I'd like to ask Mr. Clemmons to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Clemmons, County Lands. This item is to request approval to proceed with acquisition activities for two parcels. Nomination 621 is commonly known as Buck Key. It's about a 14-acre tract of land. It's the last privately held tract of land on Buck Key. It scored 29 points. Both staff and Class Act recommend going forward with acquisition activities for this parcel. If we could go to the next nomination, nomination 650. This is an upland and wetland parcel. It's just south of Orange River on the east side of Staley Road. It scored 64 points. Staff and Class Act both recommend proceeding with this parcel, being that it does have this habitat of uplands and wetlands. It provides for various wildlife characteristics. And again, staff recommends to proceed with, proceeding with acquisition activities for both of these nominations.
Okay, well, I'd like to state, you know, we as a board have shown commitment to protecting environmentally census land. I look forward to supporting this item. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this time?
I'll move the item for approval.
Second. Commissioner Wayne moves the item, item number two, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Okay, at this time, I will call for public comment unless, I have a lot of cards. If you want to come up and try to talk us out of it. All right, I'll call out the names, and you can either stand up and come on up, or you can decide if you want to just let us go ahead and continue on. So, Randy Devote. Randy.
Good day, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here representing the Watchers family regarding the Buck Key parcel. I'll be brief. Lee County Conservation 2020, Sanibel Captiva Conservation Foundation, Captiva Civic Association, Ding Darling, all have the opportunity to purchase and save the last remaining and most valuable parcel on Buck Key, the last piece of the puzzle. This is the parcel, this is Buck Key. You can see Captiva across the Roosevelt Channel. The yellow parcel is the last piece of the Buck Key that's in private ownership. The Watchers family has owned portions of Buck Key for almost half a century. Over the years, they have sold their holdings to the federal and the state government and the SCCF for conservation. Ted Watchers retained the most valuable piece, the BCC in yellow, 14 acres of mostly pristine uplands for his family's personal enjoyment, and the goal of eventually selling the parcel to the government or conservation entities for long-term preservation. Ted Watchers is now fully retired and entering his golden years, so the time has come to monetize this asset. Having the island developed is not his intent or first choice, as he much prefers to see it preserved, and he's hopeful that the effort to sell it to 2020 will come to fruit and will be successfully put into the hands of the public forever. Alternatively, he'd be forced to sell to a private buyer for future development. Points I'd like you to consider, environmental reports show 8.6 acres of uplands. There's a grandfather dock. There's already low-density property rights. This was very beneficial to the process that SCCF and Ding Darling have come to the table and said they would take over full maintenance of the property once it's acquired, so that wouldn't put a burden on the 2020 program and maintenance fees. Lee County purchased the property. It will forever remove the question of what will happen of any development activity that could happen on Buck Key. There are numerous waterfront homes and resorts that directly face the parcel and would be visually affected. By saving Buck Key, it further preserves all the ecotourism and recreational activities that take place out there, and there's numerous. There's water that can be done by low aquifers, electricity could be solar, volt tank, and sewage by modern technology, if it was going to be developed, or hopefully it's not. Having served on the 2020 Board myself, something I would like to ask you to consider when we went through this application process, I've been on the Board and I've been through this process on this side of it as well. The criterion ranking, I just ask you to take a look at it.
Is my time up? Thank you. Thank you for your time. Make the American great again. Appreciate it, sir. Appreciate it. Up next will be Keith Campbell.
Well, I was prepared to come up here to try talking you guys into doing it, but I'll say on behalf of Buckingham, thank you very much for approving this, and we look forward to seeing what we can develop out there in our rural community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Up next will be Bill Burdette. I hope I pronounced that wrong. If not, please come up and correct me.
Good morning, Bill Burdette. Here to address nomination 650, the property on Orange River Boulevard. In addition to the apparent conservation value of this property, I might point out that the property is bisected by a county-maintained stormwater drainage area. So, this property will fit, it's a strategic piece of the stormwater management plan that you adopted after Hurricane Irma. In addition to that, that stormwater management potential will also provide water quality management benefits for the entire region, and I ask you to consider that when you look at the negotiations. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Don Blackburn. Up next will be Cheryl Fisher.
Thank you, Commissioners. I too am here for item number 650. Commissioner, there's an old saying that good things come to those that are patient and wait. For the past 35 years, since 1989, the Buckingham residents have been involved in this property to find out what would eventually happen to it. Today, we are very excited and hopeful that it may become part of the 2020 county's preservation lands. This property is unique as it has upland areas, wetland areas, and it has transition areas between upland and wetlands. It also has many native hardwood trees on the property, such as oak, pine, and sable palms and others. This property has many opportunities, from open space for wildlife and birds, to stormwater storage areas like Bill had just mentioned, and others, other, more. For me personally, I think it's a great place to develop it into a destination site for the local elementary and middle schools that are nearby in the area, you know, say within a five-mile radius. If we had a place like that, it makes it much easier with, you know, today's traffic situations for field trips, so the schools can take the young kids to the field trips and learn about nature. As you've already heard, staff and Class Act have already approved it, and we're asking for your approval. And Commissioners, this is the good thing that we've been waiting for. So, I want to thank you for, it sounds like you all are going to go ahead and approve it, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Cheryl Fisher. Up next after that will be Nancy Hutto.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Fisher. I'm with the Buckingham Community Association, and just like Dawn said, as you know, we've been fighting for this property for many, many years. I've been here more times than I can count, and we're very happy that you guys are now considering it for 2020. I think as stewards of this land, we must protect our natural heritage and environment and save this property for all the local plants, animals that call it home, as well as the residents of that area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hutto. Up next will be Terry Lodge.
Good morning. I just want y'all to know that we really appreciate y'all approving this. We work very hard to preserve this property, and there is, I hope that it will continue to keep the animals and stuff out there that's there. It's been a very, very hard fight, but we really appreciate y'all, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Terry? Up next after that will be Kathleen Paget.
Well, two years ago, I stood up here and said I couldn't believe everybody here I voted for, and today I'm really happy that I did. So, I want to thank you for consideration. Cecil, when you addressed this property as the potential for 2020 at that meeting, I was like, wow, and now look at. So, thank you for your consideration. It's a great parcel for doing what 2020 wants to do with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen? Oh, there you are. Okay, up next after that? Dana Begley.
Good morning. Kathleen Paget, and I'm just here to say thank you for considering this parcel for the 2020 conservation, and I can't think of a more fitting piece of property to fit into the Buckingham Rural Community Preserve to actually have 129.6 acres of undeveloped land as part of that community. So, thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
All right, thank you. Thank you. At this time, is there any, I think I went through the cards. I could be missing someone. Is there anyone else that put in a card that would like to come up now? Please come up and state your name.
Hi, guys. Lauren McIntyre. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to fill out a card, but I wanted to come up here because I know I've been up here in the past and I've lit into you guys pretty good. So, I want to say thank you so much for your consideration and approval of this, and, you know, it's never too late to do the right thing, and I'm proud of all of you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. At this time, would staff have any further discussion on the property?
I just want to say thank you for everybody coming down and attending, and thank you for the patience. I think a lot of people have been here many years. I personally have friends and family that live across the street of this property, so I know the last 35 years, this has been a challenge in Buckingham. I think there's such, so many different elements to this, can be improvement of Lee County. It's not just the conservation element of it, it's also going to help us with our traffic issues, you know, due to the expansion, if that would be built out, you're going to look at the expansion of Wood River Boulevard and Buckingham Road, which changed the character of the community. So, this would be a great feature for conservation, also reduction of the transportation network out there. So, again, for some people, it's been a 35-year fall. I think we had, Dawn, a few people mentioned it today. So, again, thank you, and at the end of the day, we, you know, with this board, this board did the right thing here, and the county did the right thing for the community.
Any further discussion? I'd like to add to that as well, then, is to say that, you know, I live out in that area, and I think, I'm very proud of this board. I think we, every opportunity we get to chance to do what we consider something special, we try to do it, and I think this is a special decision being made today, and way to keep up the fight. So, okay, at this time, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wayne, a second from Commissioner Hammond, right? Would you like to speak on the item?
No, I agree with him.
Okay, all right. I just, if you want to speak, I'll be more glad to let you.
We're all excited about that.
I see no objections, any objections? I see none. It moves five to zero. Congratulations. Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to approve Conservation 2020 purchase on Pine Island, and I'd like to ask Mr. Clemmons to present the item.
Item number three is a request to approve a purchase agreement on Pine Island. This is a 10-acre infill parcel adjacent to the Pine Island Flatwoods Preserve Bayside. It is, the purchase price of $50,000 is below the appraised value. However, staff adjusted the appraisal due to the characteristics associated with this, having probably about 50% mangrove wetlands, and the access is challenged, however, from an individual standpoint, but it is contiguous to a county-owned property, so that access won't be an issue. Class Act recommended that the parcel or the contract be approved for acquisition, as well as staff. The seller will be paying general closing costs. The county will be responsible for cost of a survey and a phase-one audit. Any questions anyone may have?
At this time, we have, Commissioner Wayne.
I'll move the item.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve, Commissioner Wayne, a second, Commissioner Hammond. At this time, I will ask for public comment. Anyone have a card up that I'm missing? Okay. I think we have someone coming up. Okay, I thought they were coming up. At this time, does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. We have a motion to approve, Commissioner Wayne, a second, Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion for the board at this time? Any objections? Seeing no objections, item moves five to zero. Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to approve a purchase agreement for an EMS station facility in southeast Lee County. I'd like to ask Mr. Clemmons to present the item.
Item number four is to approve a purchase contract to acquire an EMS facility in the ITech University Wild Blue area along Golico Road. This particular property will give access to that area that has experienced a substantial amount of growth in the recent time. The purchase price is contingent upon an appraisal supporting it, which the purchase price would be $3,753,000. We will get appraisals. If they don't support this property, we would have the right to terminate the contract or bring it back for further conversation. If the appraisal is within the 10% of the highest appraisal, we would be able to proceed with the purchase with an amendment being approved by the county manager, is how we were setting this up, so we don't have to go back through this again. However, this is a parcel that's being built in an industrial condominium property. It's a bill to suit so that it will stay within the parameters of what is required by the condominium, as well as meet the standards that are now required for these public safety structures, which is 180 mile-an-hour wind speeds are the minimum amount for these type of structures. The size of this facility is about 6,600 square feet. The reason we're choosing this site is it does accommodate everything that we need as far as location and response time. However, in this area, the size of property that we needed is what is in very much demand in the overall community right now in these industrial type of properties, and there was very little to no substitute properties in this specific area.
Okay, at this time, do we have any questions from staff at this time?
Just for clarification, so the $3.7 million is not just the land, but actually the building itself.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, I will ask for public comment on item number four. Anyone? Okay, I will ask for public comment on item number four. Anyone wish to speak on item four at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Do I have a motion? We have a motion, second, Mr. Sandelli, a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Any further discussion from the board?
Just to comment, I mean, I think we're growing east. We know that. And as you alluded to, our ability to position so that we, response time, better serves our clients, I mean, it's an important part of that. So, thank you very much for the work on that.
Any other comment? Okay, seeing none? Any objections to item number four? Seeing no objections, item is approved unanimously, five to zero. Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to discuss issues from the Lee Health Conversion Workshop. At that workshop, you asked us to bring back a number of open, not a number of, but the open issues. Following that workshop, Lee Health had their board meeting. Following that board meeting, we have been meeting with them continuously to provide you this update. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Salyer.
Good morning, Commissioners. As the county manager indicated, we provided some material to you through your agenda recap. First, you have what we call a red line comparison that shows all of the proposed changes that have been made so far to Lee Health's original proposal. And then, we supplied an annotated agreement that highlights what staff and outside council would consider to be the largest outstanding issues for resolution if this agreement were to move forward. And then, finally, we provided an outline with some analysis of what we would highlight as the largest issues remaining. And so, all of that is geared toward getting your direction in terms of first, do you want staff to continue working with Lee Health on a draft mission agreement that you can consider later this month, and then again in October? And if so, we do want to get some feedback and direction from you on some specific points regarding the outstanding issues. If you look at the slide here, we've highlighted a few, and I will take number 2A and D together to say that Lee Health leadership is here to address you on those items specifically. If you wish, they can provide their reasoning for the approach that they've taken, and you can ask them questions about that. And ultimately, staff would ask for your direction on those two items if you concur or want to see something different. If we can just back up to the slide, we'll go to that one when Lee Health addresses the board. So, to continue with items 2B and C, I'm going to talk about these together because the oversight and monitoring, as well as the enforcement functions, are intertwined. And so, as originally proposed, Lee Health considered forming a third-party monitoring entity that would be a separate nonprofit consisting of a three-person board that would largely be self-governing, and it would have, at least for an initial period, exclusive enforcement authority for the agreement. So, that third party would have to be joined to the agreement sometime post-closing, presumably. And when I say closing, I'm talking about the transaction that would convert the Health District into a nonprofit entity. In the meantime, county staff, attorney's office, outside council have worked with the Lee Health team to craft a potential option for you to consider in the alternative, if you're not comfortable with the third-party entity concept. And that is, a little more in keeping with the county monitors a lot of other programs, and that is, the county would retain its own independent auditor to review annual certifications made by the health system that they are in compliance with the agreement. That auditor would, of course, investigate as needed, and if they had any findings, they would refer those to you as the county commission to potentially pursue enforcement action. We have worked out a process whereby the first step would be, of course, allowing Lee Health an opportunity to cure any alleged breaches of contract. Failing that, the county could invoke a dispute resolution process with the American Health Law Association, who are experienced arbiters in these matters. After they've crafted a recommended opinion, it would be up to the board to either accept that, and if you did, it would become binding on Lee Health, or reject that suggestion by the arbiter and proceed to potential litigation. So, I think with that description, I would just ask for questions regarding the oversight and monitoring piece, as well as the enforcement piece. We'll try to answer those questions, and then we can move on to the Lee Health component.
Yes, Mr. County, you can.
Just to supplement Mr. Salyer's presentation on that matter, one of the items we discussed is which party would be responsible for attorney's fees and costs. As part of the proposal, Lee Health has agreed that should it be necessary for the county to go across the street in any type of legal action, Lee Health would be contractually bound to reimburse us for our legal expenses without regard to the outcome of that litigation. So, unlike your typical scenario where a loser pays, Lee Health would be fiscally responsible for our legal fees should any legal action be necessary, regardless of the outcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, do we have any questions or statements for staff at this time? Okay, I will call public comment. I do have some comment cards. Again, we have a lot of cards. A lot of people didn't check the item numbers, but we're going to try to get to everybody.
We would need direction on these two issues, and then the Lee Health piece as well. So, if you wanted, Glenn brought forward the two items that Lee Health had to talk about, so public comment will come after all that discussion.
Okay, okay. So...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, the items that Lee Health leadership is prepared to address you on are the list of programs and services that they've proposed, and whether or not the way that they've crafted that is amenable to the commission. And then, with respect to the assets to be transferred to the new entity, they'll also tell you how they propose to meet the legislation's requirement that a description and estimated value of those assets be included in the agreement. So, if you're prepared to hear from them, we can do that now.
Is the board prepared to hear from Lee Health at this time?
Yeah.
Yes, then, yeah, let's move forward with that. So, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm Dr. Larry Antonucci, President and CEO of Lee Health. We brought our teams together, our clinical teams, our chief medical officer, chief nursing officer, to determine what are the services that we are providing to the community at this time. And we provided this list that really is all encompassing. It covers all the things that we are doing right now. The list is on the screen, so I will not necessarily repeat them. But we want to guarantee the safety net provider role that we have been for more than 100 years. And we want to really provide that certainty to the citizens of Lee County that these safety net services will be available in perpetuity. The list of the 14 services encompasses everything we do. The most vital services needed by the community, such as primary care, emergency care, trauma services. It also includes important specialty services, cancer, heart, orthopedics, and more. As a physician and a healthcare executive, my team and I have thoroughly considered the impacts that this conversion may have on our health system. And as a citizen of Lee County, the effects that conversion may have on our community. It'll give residents certainty about Lee Health's commitments moving forward. Acting now to advance the mission agreement that will enshrine these commitments is a tremendous opportunity for the county. We now have the opportunity to preserve in perpetuity Lee Health's safety net mission and provide the ability for us to be more and do more for Lee County. Thank you.
Anything further?
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. The flow was, my fault there. So, Dr. Antonucci, you heard answered the first question related to the major services as slated there for the 14, and why that encompasses everything that Lee Health does today from a patient care perspective. I'm here to answer for the transferred assets provision, or Section 5 of the Enabling Act, as it relates to this. And I'm just going to note that while the legislation does not require a line item inventory of assets and liabilities, we want to do more than provide just a narrative description of the health system and its assets and liabilities. We also want to do more than provide just a balance sheet that would meet the letter of the law. So, instead, what we're proposing is providing the most recent audited financial statement report for the commission and the public to review, which includes expansive descriptions of all assets, liabilities, and our net position. And just for clarity, I'm going to read the lines in Section 5, and why that 95-page audited financial statement answers for everything in Section 5. And I quote, "The agreement must be in writing, disposed of all assets and liabilities of Lee Memorial Health System, and include a description of each asset that will be transferred to Lee County. No assets will be transferred to Lee County. A description of each liability that will be transferred to Lee County. No liabilities will be transferred to Lee County. The estimated total value of the assets that will be transferred to Lee County. Zero value as no assets will be transferred. The estimated total value of the liabilities that will be transferred to Lee County. Again, zero value, as nothing is being transferred. If any debts will remain, how those debts will be resolved. All debts will be resolved at the closing. As it relates specifically to Lee Health, the total liabilities to be assumed by the succeeding nonprofit entity. The answer to that is $1.412 billion as of today, based on our current financial statement. The estimated total value of the assets that will be transferred to the succeeding nonprofit entity. The answer to that is $4.14 billion as of today, which is our current asset listing, encompassing all the acute care facilities and outpatient facilities, and every MRI down, every stethoscope, and every pen." And then, the description is, I'm sorry, "A description of all liabilities that will be assumed by the succeeding nonprofit entity. A description is included in the 95-page audited financial statement. And again, a description of all the assets that will be transferred to the succeeding nonprofit entity. A description is included in the audited financial statement. That is what Section 5 asks for. If there is anything beyond that that the commission and staff would like to see, we are happy to package it in a manner that works best for you all. But we are very confident that all that information is publicly available, and we'll package it however you need."
Okay, at this time, any questions? Commissioner Rain?
Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. A couple of issues. One, audited statements are as of what date? The audited statements are as of what date?
So, the audited financial statement is published on an annual basis. The numbers that I gave you actually were reflective of yesterday. So, last year's audited financial statement was published in the beginning of this year for fiscal year 2023, 2024. 2024, 2025 will be published at the beginning of calendar year 2025.
So, you're in a calendar year fiscal year. And fiscal year, if it is, what's it ending? The audited statements are cut off as of when?
September 30th. October 1st is the start of our fiscal year.
So, do we have any financials from October 1st through today? Because you've cited a lot of assets as of yesterday or today, yet the financials, if I look back, would be obviously 10 months old. Do you have any interim financials? Many times in mergers and acquisitions, you have an interim financial?
Yes, sir.
You do?
Yes, sir.
Have you shared them with us?
I'm sorry?
Have you shared the interim financials with the board?
The overall numbers, the assets and liabilities, I did. I will share them with you after this meeting.
Okay. The concern general that everyone's having, and I think the anxiety out there is, appreciate what you're trying to do for the community. We want to make sure that you have the ability, as you go through the new methodology, and potentially, it is a projection based on what you think things are going to be. Obviously, the balance sheet and the issues are important, because as you potentially have some type of conversion, or some type of lag, or some type of, you know, you need to get that new product, or a new way you're doing this, obviously, in place, you're going to obviously go through that transition period. In any company, when you change methodologies, there's a potential downside and then an upside. So, again, audited financial statements are great, but they're 10 months old. So, as one board member that certainly looks at more than a share of financial statements, I'd like a full set of internal audited statements for me to get comfortable. Because at the end of the day, the concern out the community is, we're going to tax them for anything, and what is your financial situation? And unfortunately, it was only just last Tuesday that we, as a group, came together and actually had our first conversation as a board of county commissioners. You know, it's essential that we want to make sure, and I appreciate no liabilities, no assets, but I also want to make sure that your situation, as you reflected through today or yesterday, and what was confusing to me is you made reference to audited statements, and then you gave me balances as of yesterday. So, I don't know how to actually tick and tie those, because obviously, there will be discrepancies, I'm sure, through the financial statements ended September 30th, and whatever the balances you quoted yesterday. So, love to have those. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you. Would love to ask some questions, maybe not specifically along that same line, but more backing it up to a higher level, 30,000-foot level. So, currently, as you're configured, you're a public health district, right? Is that what it's called?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, do you have the ability now to ask the public for a tax?
We do not.
You do not? Okay. Because I remember years ago, Lee Health had the ability to ask for a tax for the trauma center, and it didn't pass. But you're saying going forward, you don't have the ability to? Did you lose it, or?
Mr. Chair, if I may clarify?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, you're reconnoisseur.
Thank you, sir. So, in 2019, there was a Florida Supreme Court case related to an independent special hospital district, where the ruling applied to all 28 districts. It notes that if you do not have explicit written authority in your Enabling Act to do something, you cannot do it, meaning the trauma district tax was broader than just Lee Health. It applied to a separate independent special district that wasn't Lee Health, and it would have applied more broadly. If Lee Health, Lee Memorial Health System, the independent special hospital district wanted a tax, we would need to go back to the Florida Legislature to seek the authority to ask for a referendum.
Gotcha, okay. So, would you, if you, if the conversion is successful, and you do convert to the private nonprofit, though, you wouldn't have the ability to then seek a tax ever, correct?
Absolutely not. And in fact, as one of the tenants of the mission agreement that we're working on with staff, we're seeking to codify that.
Okay. One other thing that caught my eye as I was, or, and ear, as I was listening to the workshop, was this would lessen the dependence or reliance on federal subsidies. Could you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. So, right now, we are seeing roughly 78% Medicare or Medicaid nonpaying patients, right? Lee Health is a very large safety net provider. We will continue to see those patients. The way we generally are able to finance that model is utilizing what are called supplemental Medicaid payments, and seeing private payers who can help pay for it. In a private nonprofit setting, we would seek less support from those supplemental Medicaid payments, and we would seek to treat more individuals who can help us fund the mission to treat the nonpayers.
Okay. And then, the last thing I listened to, it sounds like this will give you, as a health system, an incentive to expand the healthcare options and the level of service that you provide to the residents of Lee County. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I do want to make sure I bring in Dr. Antonucci for this one, too, as our president and CEO, to elaborate on what more we could do. But I will say that there are partnerships as it relates to joint ventures with physicians and things that we cannot do today as a public district that we would do that would expand care. But that also applies to things like telehealth, and the ability to extend care out to where patients are, and the things that we're doing. Dr. Antonucci?
Yeah, I think if you look at what our key service lines moving forward, our ability to be more of a regional presence, to be able to draw patients in from our region, and use that to be able to fund the things that we need to do in Lee County is going to be very, very important to us. We've got to be able to compete on a regional basis. You know, we're restricted now by our legislation to the borders of Lee County. We know our competitors are going to be able to act regionally, and we're already seeing that. So, we just want to be able to compete on an even playing field, be able to fund the programs that we funded for over 100 years for the underserved and uninsured.
Excellent. And then, I guess the last thing, I would love to seek some assurance that, I would hate for this conversion to take place, but then sometime down the road, the public finds a desire to have another public health system, and then, you know, the legislature and the board has to go down that path of having to create another public health district or health system. What assurances are being built in here that we wouldn't have to go down that road?
It's kind of a political environment.
Yes, sir. So, as Dr. Antonucci referenced, the Florida Legislature is clearly demonstrating a path towards not pursuing the expansion of public districts, but quite the opposite. If you look at the legislation over the last few years, we don't see a public policy realm where they're likely to expand or recreate public districts. But the assurance that we can give you is the mission agreement. We're going beyond just being a normal 501(c)(3) nonprofit. By engaging in this agreement with the county, we're promising to do everything that Lee Health does today as a safety net, in covenant with the county in the perpetuity. The ability to fund that mission is what this is about, but that mission does not stop, and it hasn't since 1916.
I think that answers my questions, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Any further questions at this time? Mr. Pendergrass?
Michael, Dr. Antonucci, thanks for being here. A little segue off what Commissioner Hammond asked. You said that you not have the ability to ask for a tax, but would the process would be come back and ask the county to?
be come back to ask the county to impose or give, put it out to the voters to do a tax if it was needed to fund the system?
Thank you for asking, and I'm sorry, I'll create absolute clarity there. We, for the district today, the tax, as a unit of government, we would just need to seek approval to be able to do it, but as a unit of government, we could do it, we could exercise it, we just need additional authority. And as it relates to the private nonprofit, the five-oh-one-C-three, we are speaking with county staff now about putting in the covenant agreement that we will not go back to the county to ask for a tax to support the services in this mission agreement.
I really appreciate that, because that's what, you know, obviously, we get asked about that every day, and we're making sure we do the right thing. But my second thing is, I'll make sure that this is the most important thing in our community and our health system. You guys provide great healthcare now. We want to continue that, expand it, make it even better. How to, if you're losing money based upon loss of salary immunity and loss of fund, federal funding, how is this going to affect your operations in the future? How will we be able to make up that difference? So, that's some of the concern I think the community has.
Yeah, I think that at the workshop, we demonstrated, Ben Spence, our chief financial officer, showed that the actual revenue that we anticipate will be a billion dollars more over the next ten years because of our ability to compete more effectively and act regionally. So, even given those government payment programs, we feel we'll be able to offset that. And let's also remember that those government programs are programs that we fight for every year. Every year, they're potentially on the chopping block, and to build our strategy around them, I think, would be a mistake. We need to build our strategy about competing effectively, being the provider of choice, and providing the highest quality care for our citizens.
And I hope you understand my concern, and I think our concern, is, you know, our budget's pretty set. You know, we see the millage coming in, we know the values, we know what our cost is, we have reserves, and in this case, you're losing a lot of money upfront to gain, I get that, but it'll make sure we have enough money to provide the healthcare for this community.
Yeah, I mean, that's critical for our analysis. Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
Yeah, I'll follow up. I used to follow up on both the commissioners. I gather the anxiety that we all have is, and Sawyer's presentation last week, really helpful. The anxiety I'm sure you're going to have is to get to, obviously, cash flow and profitability. That's ten years out, but the concern, obviously, as someone that's coming in relatively new to this process, it's what's your burn rate until you get to that point? And that's really the concern. So, as an accountant, I certainly look at financials in that regard, because at the end of the day, any entity that goes, you need to make sure you sustain yourself as you go through your new methodology of collecting revenue. And obviously, even from your presentation last week, there's a dip before you go back up. So, obviously, we're concerned of the valley and what that looks like. Secondarily, we've spent an awful lot of time in this endeavor, staff and whatever. These expenses are yours to reimburse us for, is that correct? So, it's not the taxpayers of Lee County paying for this?
Yes, sir, yes.
So, all staff, attorney, whatever, you're going to cover that expense? So, there's no tax, obviously, hit to the taxpayer?
Right.
Okay, great. Just wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Anything further?
If I could, again, you mentioned earlier, we talked about last week at the workshop, how you want to expand across the county lines, and for years, decades, we've been helping, trying to help you guys expand in Stero and Coconut area and Bonita. But you say you would give you more opportunity to do joint ventures with other physicians, but you currently do that now, don't you, with surgical centers and other offices? What's the difference between now and the new way of, you currently do it now, though?
Yeah, the way we do it now is somewhat cumbersome, and I think it has limited value moving forward, because we have to set up separate nonprofit subsidiaries with separate boards. And we do that in a couple of cases right now. The challenge we have for our own board of directors is governance over this. You know, if this becomes more of an issue where now we have five, six, seven, ten of these deals, so to speak, and our board doesn't feel that they have appropriate governance over that, it creates an issue. So, we want to be able to do these things as Lee Health and not as a separate subsidiary, which is the way we have to do it now.
Okay, thank you.
It's just a cumbersome process.
Thank you, doctor.
Okay. Anything further? Okay. I'm going to need some, at this time, Mr. Hunter, I'm going to need some clarification of what the ask is before I open to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, if we can back up to the previous slide, please. Thank you. So, specifically, we're asking these two questions. One, do you want staff to continue working on a mission agreement for your consideration that would need to be back on your August twentieth agenda for its first consideration? And then ultimately, it would be adopted potentially in October? And if the answer to the first question is yes, then we do need direction on the second question, which is, how do you want us to tackle some of these open issues? For instance, are you satisfied with the programs and services as just outlined by Dr. Antonucci and the schedule of transferred assets as described by Michael Nachev? Then, in addition to that, we would need to understand if you are comfortable with the oversight, monitoring, enforcement provisions as contemplated by staff, which is more of the independent auditor who refuse, refers issues to the county commission for potential enforcement? Or do you want to see something more of a third-party entity that joins the agreement, governs itself, with which you have limited interaction? So, those are all the questions that we would be looking at.
And are you asking us to make that decision before we open to public comment?
No, sir, you can certainly go to public comment first, absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. All right. Anything further before I, all right. At this time, I will public comment. I do have some cards. Like I said, I've got a lot of cards that are not marked, so if I miss you, I will obviously give you opportunity. It looks like it's Reverend Dr. William Glover.
Morning, sir. I'm Reverend Dr. William Glover, senior pastor of Mount Herman Church and current president of the Greater Community Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, representing sixteen congregations primarily located in Dunbar, Central Fort Myers, North Fort Myers, and East Fort Myers. I attended the first four workshops on Lee Health exploration of converting from a public hospital to a nonprofit, private nonprofit hospital on January the fifth in the heart of the Dunbar community at QLC. And while the workshop was informative and well-structured, it was not well-attended. Concerned that the community had missed an opportunity to be educated on a decision that would impact their health, I reached out to Dr. Antonucci and asked to meet with him and his senior leadership team to discuss the conversion and what it would mean for Dunbar, the communities and congregations the ministerial alliance served. They graciously accepted my invitation. In fact, they met with the alliance member board members and member clergy no less than on six occasions. They also agreed to bring the workshop back to the community, this time in my church in a supposed format that we, the ministerial alliance, hosted. That evening on March the thirteenth, Dr. Antonucci and his leadership team presented to over three hundred and fifty community members who were concerned and passionate about this proposed transition. They took the time to listen and to answer our questions. They also heard and took seriously our recommendations for what the covenant of protection in the county bill agreement should look like, inclusive of, but not limited to, Lee maintaining its tax-exempt not-for-profit status and commitment to providing charity care, continued participation in the Medicare and Medicaid programs for the underinsured, continued operation of its federally qualified health clinics, the establishment of an independent oversight monitoring board with community stakeholder participation, and in conjunction with the Lee County Board of County Commissioners, establish a legally binding covenant of protections agreement for accountability. I'm here today because Dr. Antonucci and his leadership team have acted in good faith with me, the ministerial alliance, and the communities we represent. They have confirmed that Lee Health is committed to providing charity care and provided a safety net mission for caring for the most vulnerable in our communities regardless of their ability to pay. I'm here because I agree that it is important for our health system to have local control to assure its success and that it is not sold to an outside organization. In short, I believe the conversion will enhance Lee Health's ability to have a productive partnership with Lee County and its residents, and continue its nonprofit mission in the community by working with schools, housing departments, veterans, services, and more, all organizations that are near and dear to the ministerial alliance and the communities we serve. Conversion will also help to ensure that Lee Health can be financially strong and resilient to continue to provide safety net, high-quality care for generations to come.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you very much. In short, we support this conversion.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to go ahead and announce, because I did do it earlier, we have a light, right? Green, yellow. Yellow, when it's a yellow, you have a minute. We don't like to cut people off, but we try to give everybody the same amount of time. So, Reverend, I appreciate your statement, and I apologize for having to cut you off. So, not something we enjoy doing. At this time, Dr. Lawrence and Antonucci, if I hope I said that right. Come on up, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair Greenwell and commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. I'm Dr. Larry Antonucci. I've been in this community forty-one years. I've raised my family here. I practiced obstetrics and gynecology here, delivered thousands of babies. And this is very, very real to me. It's very important to me, and I have a connection to this community. I want to start by thanking the commission and the staff for the amount of time and effort that's been put into looking at this opportunity with us and recognizing the benefits of it and also the risks of not acting at the present time during this window of opportunity. We've worked diligently. Our leadership team has worked diligently over the past year assessing this, including an assessment by an outside third-party, an independent third-party Kaufman Hall, in addition to many subject matter experts that we've worked with. Our Lee Health Board of Directors has been working this past year, conducting workshops, public hearings, many interfaces with our community to understand the concerns and the needs of this community as we have for all these years. We know that the Board of County Commission has raised serious questions, and we are working with the staff right now to answer every one of them. Our board of directors met, and I'm very pleased with the progress that we've been able to make in a relatively short amount of time. We are open to the preference of the commission regarding the oversight structure, as Mr. Salyer talked about. Whatever works best for you will work for us. Importantly, the mission agreement goes above and beyond what you would see in a standard conversion, and we did that with intent and by design. As laid out in the enabling legislation, your role is a very important one. It's to ensure that the agreement provides the ability to hold Lee Health accountable for its commitments made in the agreement. The responsibility to make it work is up to us at Lee Health, and we're confident that we will do that and, in fact, exceed any expectations that you might have. And while much work has been done, posting this publicly will give us another forty-five days to have more conversations with the Board of County Commission, with our own board, with the public, to address concerns and questions that may arise before a final decision has to be made later in the year. I'm optimistic about what the future holds for Lee Health and for Lee County. And protecting this community safety net health system is critical for our citizens and our community to thrive into the future. So, on behalf of the sixteen thousand staff members at Lee Health, the two thousand medical staff members, our three thousand volunteers, their families, and all the residents of Lee County, I want to thank you for joining us on this journey.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Dana Begley, next. After that, Joyce Campana will be next. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dana Begley, and I'm vice president of Wellness and Recovery for Lee Health. With conversion, I see enormous possibilities before us, and I'm here today to encourage you, the county commissioners, to help ensure that we do not miss this opportunity to improve our community while maintaining our primary focus of delivering high-quality care to the residents of our county and our community. We know the world is changing daily, and flexibility in operations will allow us to adapt more quickly to the changing healthcare needs of our community, and that has never been more important. A nimble organizational structure will boost our ability to respond more dynamically to our patient and community needs, and it's essential for increasing opportunities for professional growth and development. In my current role, I have a unique viewpoint on what moving forward with conversion can mean. The post-acute continuum consists of the care provided to individuals once they leave the hospital or the doctor's office. This includes rehab, skilled nursing, home health, et cetera. Expanding these services to address community need is always on top of mind. Rather than looking to build new programs, partnering with well-established market providers is a way to bring services to patients more quickly, and it strengthens the collaboration that we can have within our community. As a public health system, we are often constrained, has been discussed already, in what we can do from a service growth perspective. For example, being public sometimes getting, gets in the way of us forming a true business partnership. I'm currently forming a relationship with a local hospice organization, but because of our organizational structure, I can't truly form a contractual partnership with a formal agreement. Instead, we have a handshake deal that does not have enforceable covenants, and either party could walk away from us at any time. These partnerships are essential to Lee Health continuing to expand our continuum across the continuum. Access to care is extraordinarily important to me, and I see a real opportunity to expand patients' ability to receive care, not only by growing services, but particularly for those that don't have insurance. By converting to a public, I'm sorry, by converting to a private, community-focused nonprofit, we could enter into more partnerships in which we ensure the partners comply with the key elements of our mission. This will improve our ability to provide seamless transitions of care for patients across the entire continuum and improve patient experience and the quality of those outcomes. As we expand our offerings in our footprint, we allow our residents to get care close to home. I'd like to add that my personal perspective comes from over thirty years of working in both national for-profit healthcare corporations as well as community nonprofit hospitals, and I'm extremely proud to be part of a healthcare system that prioritizes patient care and community well-being, ensuring that every individual receives compassionate, high-quality care close to home, regardless of their ability to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campana?
Joyce Campana, for the record. I have a different point of view. I'm not sure I'm in favor of giving up our public hospital. One of the reasons we moved here was because of the way Lee Memorial was run. I know the trend is going to this direction, but I'm not sure that it's a good idea to give it up. One of the items on the slide about oversight and oversight and monitoring, that's a tough job. You know, part of me says, you can do your oversight, you can try to do your monitoring, but so what? Maybe we're interpreting the part of the policy differently, maybe we're interpreting this differently. What are you going to do to me? I'm not saying Lee said that, that Lee Health said that, but I just see that oversight and monitoring might be difficult if it's a private entity and might be very unsuccessful. Also, I'm curious why if taxing, lack of taxing authority has been such an issue, why legislative change or authorization to do that wasn't sought prior to see if it would help avoid converting to private nonprofit? I also have a question. It sounded like I was hearing that private insurers would end up helping to pay for Medicare or Medicaid patients, which I think is the standard, you know, you charge them a little more. Is there going to be a control on how much more those people get charged? Is there going to be a longer waiting time for people on Medicare because the shift then will be to private insured people to help pay? It seems that I'm hearing an awful lot about profit and money, and we can't expand outside Lee County. Good Lord, do you need to go outside Lee County with the way Lee County's growing? I'm amazed that that's an issue. And, you know, you have half a Babcock Ranch in Lee County, or whatever the proportion is. They just partnered with a different, probably competition for Lee Health for their healthcare in their area. So, I have some real concerns about this. I've heard people say two things, and then I'll be done. One, I've heard people say, well, if the public thinks it's so important to have a public hospital, why haven't they run for the board? Well, that's still not a good reason to give up our control, our option of a public hospital. Well, that's still not a good reason to give up our control, our option of a public hospital. Some people just aren't made to run for public offices, and I'm not sure we want to let this big asset go. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Marcia Ellis. Marcia, you're okay on that item? Okay, you checked all the boxes. Make sure I don't miss you. All right. Dr. Melissa Wood.
Chair Greenwell and your fellow Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to make a public comment. I am Dr. Melissa Wood, and I'm the Vice President and Chief Physician Executive over the Heart Institute Cardiovascular Service Line. Just over a year, I moved to this beautiful community of Lee County, and I came here to help develop and lead the Heart Institute. We fell in love with this community many years ago after bringing our family here to vacation, and I'm now a proud resident of the Astero Community. And as such, it's really important for me to do my part to ensure that this community continues to thrive, and I truly believe that conversion of Lee Health will give us that opportunity. Not only will it strengthen our position in the market, but it will further enable us to provide the cutting-edge and innovative care that we need, and this growing community will need this even more over the coming years. It will also, as Dr. Antonucci mentioned, give us an opportunity to explore and enter into creative partnerships and joint ventures, which are very cumbersome and difficult at the current time. This will allow us and enable us to bring more world-class physicians to this area, and again, that's why I came here. I came here from Massachusetts General Hospital in Boston, Massachusetts. I saw an incredible opportunity, seeing what was happening in a large, private, nonprofit setting, to bring many of the concepts here that would allow us to develop and improve beyond the current state, even patient care, research, and education for our healthcare providers of the future. Conversion will allow us to strengthen our graduate medical programs and to continue to recruit the best and the brightest, not only to train them, but then hopefully to recruit them to stay here for the remainder of their careers. I believe that conversion will free us from many of the bureaucratic constraints that have been present, and it will unlock opportunities for creative growth. Again, I believe that conversion is in the best interest of our community and our patients, and I am completely passionate and supportive of this idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Tara Jenner.
I'm not necessarily in favor or against whether there's going to be a conversion, but as a recovering lawyer, because I'm no longer practicing, who actually did work in the area of healthcare law, I do have some concerns. While this was not my bailiwick when it came to conversion processes, contracts were, and I don't see a firm contract yet. And I don't understand how we can go forward pushing this when we haven't got definitive what's going to happen in front of us. What exactly is going to be this oversight and monitoring? It's this nebulous thing that's being talked about now without any specificity. That does concern me. I do know that we have a timeline that we're working with, but if this timeline comes and goes, that timeline can be reset and we can proceed again, looking at it in more depth and detail. I would like to see definitive written agreements, plenty of time in advance, not just communication with discussion of what we want to see or what we think would be good and what would be beneficial. I want to see the actual language of the agreement as it will be implemented once agreed to, if that comes to pass, rather than leaving it as this amorphous thing out there on what we would like to have done. The other thing that I have a few concerns with is this whole issue of in perpetuity. I mentioned this last week. I've seen many a contract that have drafted and included in it the language "in perpetuity", and it never, ever stays in perpetuity. And so I would like to see, at a bare minimum, a formal contract, an actual discussion on how this transfer is going to take place, with specificity, including, if it were to come to pass, a language that says that the properties would return to Lee County should that "in perpetuity" clause disappear and vanquish into thin air. These are some concerns that I have. Also, I have some questions that I will ask later on of the individuals who presented. What does inpatient service include? My husband is a physical medicine and rehab doctor, and I don't know whether or not that does or does not include the inpatient rehab services that we currently have, and I'd like more details on exactly what that inpatient service entails. So those are my comments for this evening, or this morning, I should say. I've been up late. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I think that completes the cards, but I'm going to ask if anyone else would like to come speak. I may have your card in my hand, it's just not marked. So please come on up and introduce your name, sir.
Dr. Edward Grass, M.D., for the record. Questions, questions. I've got them, and I can see on your faces that you have some too. I practiced here since 1979. In that time, I followed and I disapproved of the machinations of the Lee Memorial Health System. I remember once when CEO John Gad so offended a portion of the medical staff that they broke free and built Fort Myers Community Hospital, which was later engulfed by Lee Memorial and ceremoniously torn down. There's a great deal of disclosure that needs to be done before this privatization unfolds. No secret backroom deals necessary. Is Lee Memorial currently owned by the county? Is it a partner? It has probably the largest real estate holdings of any entity. Who owns those and what happens when they privatize? They have 16,000 employees and a $2.75 billion budget. How's that going to be funded when they privatize? I remember at Cape Coral Hospital, back when it was an independent entity, it went through two acquisitions with HCA and Lee. Both of those caused many employees to lose their 401Ks and be forced to retire. Another question, what's the cash cow behind the privatization? $2.75 billion per year is a lot of money to maintain. Who's going to come through with that money and help support this entity? And then who gets the paybacks for all of that? The hospital board, which is appointed, which is voted on by the community, will be eliminated. There'll be a three-member panel appointed for accountability, but who's the accountability going to be to? Most importantly, what will be the effect on healthcare in this county with this transition? At the last meeting, one of the representatives from Lee Memorial said that privatization will allow Lee to effectively compete in the healthcare arena in Southwest Florida. Competition's a good thing. I think it enhances performance. They need competition. Please place the decision to accept this privatization on hold until much more accurate, truthful information is pro-offered by Lee Health to the satisfaction of both you, the County Commissioners, and the citizens of Lee County, who will be tremendously affected by this privatization. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nope. Please, we don't, we want to respect all the speakers, so please don't clap or anything. We just want to kind of have a level of quorum here for everyone. Anyone else wish to speak on this item at this time? Please come on up and state your name.
Rhonda Drazz from Cape Coral. I'm not as eloquent as my husband, but I have been a citizen in this county for 45 years. First time I've ever come and spoken before the council. But before I was living in Florida, I was a debate coach and English teacher in Pennsylvania. And one of the things you always teach your debaters is that unless you have a compelling reason to vote with the new plan, the new plan is always proposed by the affirmative team, you vote negative, always, because you assume, it is presumed, that the status quo is working. The status quo has been working in Lee County for many, many years. In fact, Lee County, Lee Memorial Health System has encouraged or has benefited from the tax-free status that it's had for well over 100 years. Last week, Dr. Antonucci and his legal representation came before you and essentially asked for a monopoly. They don't like any competition coming from Charlotte County or anywhere else. And I've sort of served for 40 years as the practice manager for a small medical practice, and I have never found Lee Memorial to be very friendly toward the small, independent physician. It's important for Lee County, why is it important for Lee County to expand beyond the scope of this county? And I love what that lady had to say. As big as this county is growing, why do they really need to do this? But if it is important for them to expand, why not just create a separate entity that will build and deal with just those outlined medical practices? So I would certainly encourage you to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Okay, I will come back to the board at this time. Commissioner Sandelli.
I wanted to wait till after public comment and try to order my own thoughts and stuff like that. I'd like to offer those just a little bit. Everything we do, we do with a timeframe, and that puts pressure on us, whatever the decision is, personally or professionally. So there's a crunch going on here, and I applaud everybody from the hospital to our staff that's thinking through this with as much detail as they can. It's a challenge for everybody. But I also think from the board, from our past meetings, that the importance to keep this process moving is critical for a couple of things. One is, what's the big picture? We can leave the system as is, but that's not the reality of the marketplace today, and we have to consider that. We could see, as brought up today, you know, tax support. That's a very challenging process to take before the constituents to put tax dollars up. We could sell all this to another entity, and from my perspective, you don't know who you're dealing with. So to move to a nonprofit is a proven methodology, church that I have done and people, a number of doctors. So I think the path that we're going down through this has merit. There are some questions, no questions, as Commissioner Wayne brought up, there's some financial questions, you know, there's some lag time with what we're doing here. But I do think that the move, the agreement to move this along is responsible to protect our constituents, to have oversight, and that was brought up a number of times today, and we need that because we don't have all the answers to that. We need to be flexible, but bottom line is we need to protect Lee County and its legal and financial matters, and I think that we've done that in discussion. We're not done yet. This is a piece of work in progress. So I hope that we continue to ask questions. I hope we can provide the answers, and I look forward to where this takes us collectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else at this time?
Well, Mr. Chair, just for sake of answering the request from our county manager, I guess what they're asking us today is to answer these questions here under the yellow box. You know, I guess question one is, do you want staff to continue working with Lee Health on a draft mission agreement for consideration in August and then October? So if I can ask a question to Mr. Harner, the county manager. So what you're saying is basically August 20th, you would bring us the draft mission agreement, and if we agree on August 20th with that draft mission agreement, it would then be published for 45 days for public review and public comment, but not finalized, obviously. It wouldn't be, the final decision wouldn't take place until sometime in October? Is that my understanding?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so I've looked at the mission agreement and obviously looked at the staff's red lines and annotations, and so number two, you're asking us, you're saying these are the open issues even after the redlining and the annotations that we made that we would like direction from the board on? Okay, so I mean, I don't know if we all should just share our thoughts on that and have that discussion then, but I'm okay with, I have seen enough through the mission agreement that I'm okay with bringing it to a vote, as long as, Mr. Harner, the mission agreement that we'll vote on on August 20th will be put, attached to the agenda and fully available for the public to read and come and comment on, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so that's good. I mean, it needs to get out in the public, it needs to be publicized. And then, you know, I'm okay with having that as an agenda item, not saying how I'm going to go either way on it. And then, as far as your question on programs and services and the schedule, I mean, I feel like they provided a pretty comprehensive schedule at the meeting this morning, based on your staff recommendation. Number two, as far as oversight and monitoring, I like the staff's recommended option here because I feel like you've created a due process, if you will, through the independent auditor who will then, you know, seek compliance. You'll give them a chance to, I guess, rectify any issues that that auditor finds, and if he doesn't, then we're going to go to, it's called American Health Law Association, is that right? What, how does, explain that due process that you're talking about here for the oversight and monitoring, the staff recommendation.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Harner.
I'm going to ask Mr. Salyer to present that.
Commissioner Hammond, of course, I'll ask the county attorney to weigh in where needed here as well. The idea would be, just as you described, the independent auditor would refer issues to the County Commission and also notify Lee Health, at which time Lee Health would have that chance to cure that you just talked about. If that doesn't resolve to the Commission's satisfaction, you could institute alternative dispute resolution process with the American Health Law Association, who does have experienced arbiters specifically in these types of matters. So the independent auditor would provide all of their information to American Health Law Association. Lee Health would do the same, and then that entity would craft a recommended order, if you will, a recommended resolution. That would come to the board for either adoption or you could reject it. If you adopt it, the contract would say that it becomes binding on Lee Health, so they are then subject to that, you know, that recommended order. If, on the other hand, you want to do nothing, that's an option, or you would have the option to proceed to litigation and ask a court to intervene in the matter.
And if we did proceed to that litigation, then I think we just heard today that even that cost of that litigation would then be borne by Lee Health?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Regardless of how it turns out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, I can't think of a much, you know, better due process than that, the way that's designed. It sounds like the safeguards, even from a cost factor, have been built in for the people of Lee County. Did you want to add anything, Mr. County Attorney?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Richard.
Just Commissioners, as you can well imagine, this whole issue of dispute resolution and remedies was a subject of a, more than a fair amount of discussion and debate. We started out with formal arbitration, we talked about mediation, we talked about direct access to the court system, and at the end of extensive discussions, the recommendation that you have before you, we believe as your staff, is the most amenable to addressing any shortcomings that may arise going forward. We believe it hits both Lee Health's concerns as well as ours of not duplicating efforts, and by that I mean, it's been my professional experience that formal mediation and/or arbitration processes are simple steps to ultimate litigation. So instead of litigating once, you end up litigating two or three times. So we were sensitive to that aspect, and that's why we went with the system that you see before you, because it seems to be the most expedient, most cost-effective, and protects the county and its taxpayers from costs associated with any dispute resolution that might be necessary. To that extent, I just want to point out that that covenant, as well as the balance of the agreement, does have a 99-year term. We talked about perpetuity a little bit, but we have now made a recommendation to you all that the term of the agreement would be for 99 years and would automatically renew. Either party could request early termination, but it would have to be by mutual consent. So there's no easy way out for one party.
Okay, oh, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and then I appreciate that extra information too as part of that. So then, three, we go to the enforcement, and again, the staff had a recommendation, again, very, very similar to what was just outlined by Mr. Wesh. The assets, they talked about transferred assets. Lee Health described those today from the podium. And then the closing date. And then, the closing date of October 31st. I mean, you know, I agree that if we could get through the, you know, if nothing significant, if we put it out to the public, first of all, to have the discussion, you got to put it out. So if we put it out to the public, and in that forty-five days, something comes up that all of us say, we can't agree to this, then clearly, I think forty-five days would give us the time to not approve it in October. So I feel like I'm at a comfort level to take the next step anyways with the August 20th meeting and getting it on the agenda. And I like the staff recommendations, I think they were well thought out, and so I think they answer a lot of the questions and concerns that I had too related to this, so that's where I'm at.
Okay. Further discussion?
I'll answer.
Commissioner Wayne, you have to.
So obviously, what we're addressed right now is just the draft aspect. So similar to what Commissioner Hammond said, I mean, we're at a draft, and this is moving very quickly, there's endless questions, and they're still there. Obviously, we try to go through this process as quickly as we can, but it's a draft, and I don't have any anxiety moving the ball, and if my decision, as we start to get more and more information, is no, it's no. It's that simple. I mean, obviously, we need to go through this process. The anxiety is the unknown, the anxiety is the financial new model and how it cash flows and things of that nature. And I think we've addressed, you know, the ability to tax, so that obviously is there. We have an independent auditor, which gives me great comfort. We have a mechanism in place if we have a dispute. I mean, it certainly appears like it's a different alternative than I've ever seen in the private sector. You know, obviously, cover yourselves from a liability point of view, you never like to go into suits, but those things happen. Only once, one attorney fees, because the courts award those, but generally, that don't happen. So I'm okay with, because it's a draft, we're not making a final decision today, I'm okay moving forward with the mission draft. And the open issues give me the consternation, but what we have right now, obviously, we need to continue to do that. That doesn't mean that August 20th, don't have an opportunity to say no, or in October, it doesn't say no. So my yes isn't, this is a hundred percent, this is final, it's a draft, it's a fluid situation, we've had a week to talk amongst each other, we've had one meeting, and at that meeting, we're only four of us. So based on where we are right now, I don't have a problem proceeding, I don't want that misconstrued as that this is a guaranteed yes in October, because there's still far too much due diligence in my eyes, and I want to see the rest of it come through.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further thing?
I'd just like to say this obviously gives us more opportunity and more public input. Thank you, everybody that spoke today. I think Lee Health held eighteen prior to this year, workshops and things throughout the community, so we're going to continue to have that discussion, and I'd like for it to move forward.
And I think we're all in the same position here, where at least, I agree with everyone that has spoke about it today. What I need clarification, Mr. Harner, is we're going to make a motion here. So would someone like to make a motion, or would you like to clarify exactly what we need to make in our motion?
I believe Commissioner Hammond outlined, really what we're looking for is moving forward with our recommendations and that you're comfortable with what Lee Health stated regarding the programs, services, and the transferred assets. So I believe you covered what we were looking for.
Well, with that said then, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and take a shot at making a motion that, as to the question number one, we do move forward with presenting that draft mission agreement for consideration at the next August meeting. And then, number two, that we move forward with incorporating the staff's recommendations into the mission agreement on those open issues that they've outlined there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to try and capture and perhaps add to, I believe there was a discussion of a request for interim financial statements. Would the motion maker consider that to be part of the motion, that Lee Health be required to furnish those statements to your staff?
Yep, I'll add that to my motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, Commissioner Hammond, do I have a second at this time? We have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, any objections? Okay, seeing none, motion moves unanimous five to zero. That concludes the administrative agenda at this time. Let's move to the public hearing. There is one public hearing item. Mr. Harner, please introduce public hearing item number one.
Good morning, Commissioners, Amanda Swindle from the county attorney's office. I have your public hearing this morning. This public hearing is to approve a resolution to establish the solid waste disposal and system assessment rates for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and to direct those special assessments to be placed on the tax bill for collection, and to approve modest CPI increases in accordance with our franchise hauler agreements. And I believe county administration has some further detail on this request for you.
Thank you, Amanda. I'd like to ask Ms. Brady to present the rest of the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This public hearing is to approve the request to increase the solid waste rates for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Recommendation from staff is for a six percent increase, which averages approximately eighteen dollars per household. This request is based on contractual increases, expansion projects, and declining revenue from electricity sales. Staff is available for questions if you have any.
At this time, we have questions for staff? Okay, I will open up the public comment. Like I said, I have some cards with names, but not sure of the numbers, so I'm going to just ask if you would like to speak on this item, and please come up and state your name. Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, we've got one coming? Yeah, come on, I apologize, I didn't see you standing up.
You gentlemen just discussed a working document about the health conversion. I did not see that document online with the markups from staff. I'd like to know why. And I'd also like to know, is it at this point in time that I talk about county manager items and workshop, or is that later?
That's been completed, that, we're discussing item one now.
I thought you said public comment.
I will have staff address the fact that whether it's online or not with you after words. Are you going to discuss item one? Public hearing? Public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, you know what? I thought you were under the item of public comment. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll wait till later. You are right.
No, that's okay.
Got the wrong public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so any one else wish to speak on this item at this time? Okay, I will close public comment. Does any, back to staff, anybody have any comments or conversation at this time? Mr. Sandelli?
Just thank you to our staff for going through this very diligently and putting it together and keeping this according.
One question, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wayne.
So, we'll continue to provide the same level of service from solid waste that we've provided in the past? Any reduction in service levels, or any services that won't be offered going forward?
Everything's the same, yes, Commissioner, same service levels.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anything further? Okay, does anyone wish to make a motion on item one?
I'll make a motion, will you get it?
Motion from Commissioner Sandelli, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wayne. Any further discussion? Any objections? I object to item one, it passes four to one, Commissioner Greenough voted no. Okay, all right. That concludes public hearings for today. We have walk-ons and carryovers. Are there, there are no walk-ons or carryovers on the agenda, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Items. Moving to Commissioner Items, Commissioner Hammond, do you have an?
I have no Commissioner Items today.
Commissioner Pendergrass, do you have an item?
I have no items, I think, staff, again, recognize staff, I attended the gun show this weekend at the Pacific Center, and they're doing an amazing job out there, Mackenzie and her staff. So again, thank you to the county management, administration, and all your employees for making that venue a such a better place now. It's just, people are so much happier, that people attending all the different events out there, the Pacific Center, it's just amazing what a job they've done the last year. So thank you to all the staff.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wayne. Commissioner Sandelli, no sir. I have one item. I would like to discuss a request we received from constituents to adopt a resolution in opposition of Amendment Four. If there's a, I would like to ask the board if there's consensus to ask staff to move forward on a resolution similar to what Carver County did. Do we have, can we have a discussion on that? Is anyone?
I'm in, let's do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so Commissioner Sand, you're not, okay, all right.
I'm okay, because like I said, I haven't really actually seen the resolution in Carver County, the language that was being sent to me on social media, I cannot use that within my work scope, so I don't share that with my work computer. So I would like at least to know what the resolution says, you know, but support moving forward to review that though.
Okay, I think we have a consensus that we would consider staff drawing up a resolution that we can look at to vote on, so.
And if I could have clarified, this is for the November election anyway, so we have time.
Yes.
We can see it back before the twentieth or the future.
Yes.
Before November, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, it's my understanding it would be your direction with board approval to direct staff to prepare a resolution for your consideration at your August 20th board meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that, and we would vote on that at that time, yes.
Thank you.
So I'll make that motion.
A second.
Second. Do I need to have, I open up for public comment. I believe I have a lot of cards here for that. Before we get to public comment, I'll ask the commissioners, it's eleven, basically eleven fifteen, do we want to take a ten or fifteen minute recess for a restroom break?
Is it a lot of cards?
I have a lot of cards, yes.
Oh, all right, yeah, then let's do that.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to take a fifteen minute break, and we will resume back, okay?[1326.51]
I just want to make sure. Okay, everybody, let's reconvene. It's now eleven thirty-two. I would like to clarify before we go to public comment on the resolution that I was asking for. What I would like to clarify is I'm asking staff to research an amendment resolution to bring back to the board in the future. So without putting a timeline on it, I think we should have opportunity to review that before we would bring it to the board for a vote. So that's what I'm asking. Can I get a second on that?
Sure. Yes.
Second from Commissioner Wayne. Okay, at this time now, I will open this up for public comment and I will tell everybody that if you agree with the motion that I've made and you want to just stand up and say you agree that we're going to have a resolution drawn up and for us to review and to vote on in the future. So with that being said, I will start with public comment and it looks like Julie Millen.
Can I have somebody who will perform an S O P?
I'm sorry.
Can I have somebody who will perform an S O P?
Before, yeah, you want to give me, come on up and state your name and I'll pull your card. That's fine. Let's go.
Yeah, Germa Hernandez.
Yes, sir. Come on up. Please state your name at the mic. Let me find your card.
Good morning. Is it good morning? Yeah, still morning, sorry. So, good morning, this is Germa Hernandez, Jr. I was here last week as well, so I'll start off by saying, start off with Proverbs thirty-one, verses eight through nine. Says, "Open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all who are destitute. Open your mouth, judge, righteously; defend the rights of the poor and needy." As I mentioned last week, the vagueness of this amendment is disturbing as well as the numerous consequences and repercussions that will come along with it. No definitions for key terms have been provided. For example, what does viability mean? The fact that the word viability can open the door for abortions up to full term should have every single one of you running to sign off on the proposed resolution. Please don't hesitate or draw out the signing off on this resolution any longer. A healthcare provider is which, under Florida law, isn't limited to medical doctors, but ranges from optometrists, chiropractors, physical trainers, acupuncturists, et cetera. As a parent myself, it's infuriating and saddening to know that if this amendment gets voted in, this amendment would allow minors to have abortions by merely informing the parent that the abortion took place after the fact. Where do our parental rights end up going? They end up being pushed out the way and leading to an overstep of our rights. If this amendment goes through, it would allow full-term abortion approved by an undefined healthcare provider for not just adults, but minors. Voters deserve to know this and the amendment summary refuses to tell them. I'm exhorting commissioners, I am exhorting you commissioners to speak out against the amendment and humbly asking that, as Collier County spoke out and condemned this abhorrent amendment, that you should do the same today. Please stand up for the voiceless. And for anyone that is for Amendment Four, if you are saying, there's a pin, one of the ladies here is wearing a pin that says, "Vote yes on Amendment Four," abandon the four-week, what is it, the six-week abortion ban? They're straight up telling you their goal is to have full-term abortion in the state of Florida. Don't be oblivious to the schemes of the enemy. All right? They're literally telling you, telling you straight up what they're trying to do and they're using deceptive languages. And we will, especially you, Romans thirteen says, "As civil magistrates, you will, you have a responsibility to protect the citizens, the residents of Lee County. And you will give an account before the Lord one day." So please, stand up for truth. Thank you.
Okay. Up next will be Chaz DeFeo. If I pronounce it wrong, please correct my pronunciation when you get up with your name, please.
Thank you for starting always with prayer and Pledge of Allegiance and praise be Jesus Christ forever. Just to be clear, so you're saying, my hearing this right, saying you're inclined to write a resolution against Amendment Four?
Yes.
You said that, right? Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, a lot of people are going to talk and it's the right thing to do. God bless you. Thank you and I hope you do that.
Thanks, sir. Jennifer Tabora.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Your choice to support the Lee County resolution to vote no on Amendment Four will shape the future of our community. I understand that there are those who believe that saying yes to Amendment Four will just reduce the ban on the six-week abortion. But the truth is, you're actually saying yes to the possibility of depression and suffering over the years. And I want to share my story to explain that. I'm no scholar, but I have a voice and my name is Jennifer Tabora. I'm here today to testify of my personal experience having been taken to my first abortion clinic by my mother when I was twelve years old. I would go on to have abortions until I was twenty-nine. In those days, I watched a video that explained it's only tissue, but that didn't explain the years of depression that I suffered following the multitude abortions that I had. I would try to commit suicide six times, spent my twenties heavily medicated in an intensive therapy to deal with my childhood, having been raised in addiction. I had no idea when I cried out to God for the last time with a razor blade in my hand, asking Him to show me He was real and if He was, to save me from myself, that He would do just that by showing me the root of my suffering. But you are probably wondering why this has to do with why we're here today. I'm asking you to please support the Lee County resolution to say no to Amendment Four. I may not have all the answers, but I have lived and I have not gone through hell on this earth for nothing. My story will be told and used to help women just like me. I understand our society tells us that there's no correlation between depression, abortion, and mental health. As a matter of fact, there are well-edited aesthetically pleasing videos that would assure us there's no such correlation, much like the ones I watched in my early days. But I am living proof that there is and I am not alone. The truth is, in my personal experience, the pro-life community has one goal, to save lives and oftentimes does not offer a safe space for women to admit that they've had an abortion. And the pro-choice community does not want to hear about how abortions has caused pain, depression, feelings of worthlessness, lack of self-esteem. And I am here today to give a voice to the thirty-one percent of women who suffer in silence. I know that it's thirty-one percent of women because it tells us that the Gallup Institute of Research says that one in four women will be diagnosed with depression by the end of their life and the Guttmacher Institute actually says that one in four women will have abortion by the end of their life. Why does this matter to the state of Florida and our constitution? Our government is made up of people, our communities are suffering, and we choose to put Band-Aids on the problems. We can choose, or we can choose to look at the real issues and seek solutions that cut to the core of the problem. Today, I urge our government to join forces with our community members to address these core issues. By doing so, we can achieve sustainable solutions. Please, vote. I'm so sorry, I'm nervous. Please, vote no.
And you're out. Thank you, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Bethany Gardner.
No.
He can't get additional time, but you can certainly come on up and have your three minutes, sir.
Me and I can't have six minutes instead of three? Am I understanding that correctly?
No.
I am a Baptist pastor.
I know, sir. But we treat everyone equal in this.
Okay. Actually, I moved here thirty-eight years ago, just as you were beginning to tear up the league. And loved following your career and knowing that you're a hometown guy. It's been great to see you.
Well, thank you, sir. That's super nice to hear.
Yeah, so great to see you in this position. I'm pastor of Grace Baptist Church in Cape Coral, Florida, have been for thirty-eight years. I'm the president of Founder's Ministries and been doing that for about thirty-six years. I am married to my wife Donna for forty-four years. We have six kids, eighteen grandkids, and more on the way as I speak. One might be born today. And we are all residents here in Lee County. And we love it here and we're grateful for what God has done here. I was born a Texan. I thought I'd die a Texan, but I'm going to die a Floridian. And I used to think that Texas was the greatest state in the Union, but I'm convinced now Florida is. And it grieves me to see what leftists are doing, to try to come in to steer our state into their horrific agenda. This is not something that is native to Florida. This is something that is attempting to be done to Florida by people who don't care about our way of life. Everybody knows that an unborn child is a child. Everybody knows that. The pro-choice people know that. And children are image bearers of God, just like you and I are. And when my Lord and Savior walked this earth, He actually rebuked His disciples because they tried to keep children from Him. And I am sure now that He is ruling and reigning in heaven, that He still is saying, "Let the little children come to Me." And we don't want to be on the opposite side of Jesus when it comes to children. And so I am pleading with you to hear the resolution, make sure it's strong enough to send a direct, complete message to these leftists who are pouring tens of millions of dollars into our state, the greatest state in the Union, in order to make it more and more like they would like to have it be and infuse a culture of death into this state. Tell them to take their money and go home and let us have the right to continue to cultivate the kind of culture and way of life that we've come to love here in the state of Florida and continue to protect and love and honor all people, including unborn image bearers of God. So thank you for taking this up. And when it comes time to vote, please send a message to those who would try to steer this state into a culture of death.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Gardner is next. Up after that will be Robert Reynolds.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Aaron Gardner and I come before you again, asking that you vote in favor of the resolution presented to you to condemn Amendment Four, which would see the death of Florida babies, including those of Lee County, up to nine months. Strip away parental rights, take power away from our duly-elected officials because a Marxist outsider group came into our state pouring millions of dollars to push their agenda. I ask you men to fulfill your duty before God and speak out against this abomination. Last week, we heard from one citizen who got up multiple times telling you men in one breath that you have a moral duty to protect the life of unborn babies by attacking a political candidate for his alleged pollution of our waters that would harm unborn babies. To then get up here and lecture you men and everyone in these chambers that your purview is to quote, "Protect life, health, safety, and quality of life," of life, and this is outside of Lee County's realm. This is hypocrisy of the other side's position and their worldview. You apparently have the duty to protect unborn babies by attacking political opponents that don't line up with their Marxist ideology, but when it interferes with their ideology, it is no longer your duty. This is the problem when you don't have a standard for right and wrong. You end up with a smorgasbord of ethics where you pick and choose when it suits you. Yes, you do have a duty to protect life, health, and safety, life, health, safety, and quality of life, as was stated, but that also includes those in the womb, no matter if a small minority that doesn't value them, refuses to believe so. I was just informed this morning that Bradford County passed a resolution as well to call out Amendment Four. So I would also like to ask, why are we still reviewing and claiming that we haven't received the resolution? We have received word from Greenwell's office that they confirmed that they were sent a resolution on July sixteenth. I'd like to know more details of when we will have an official vote and up to the point of November is an unacceptable time. Thank you.
All right, up next is Robert Reynolds.
Thank you, commissioners. I was here last week, I'm here again, asking you to vote no. Brian wasn't here, but four of you did hear that. We presented the resolution from Collier County, that's been presented to you clearly. There's no reason why you haven't read it. It's very small. I mean, this is it. Okay? Yeah. So, please, we can't afford any more time wasted. Okay? If we get to the point where this is passed in our state, we'd be litigating for years. You know that and the litigation costs will be tremendous on our state. And that litigation, while it was happening, you would find a judge somewhere in Florida who would say, "You know what? I think I'm for this yes bill. Let's go." And we'd be killing more children, okay? What happened in Roe v. Wade? It was fifty years of that. We can't have fifty more years of litigation to decide whether or not a child in the womb is a human being. Go read the embryology text. The embryology texts are very clear. The basic texts tell us, and ninety-four percent of embryologists agree, a human being is created at fertilization. Okay? That's a fact. So I ask you, please, do not delay. Early voting will come very shortly and we have a primary coming up in a couple of weeks. I heard the date, August twentieth. Is August twentieth when we're going to convene and make a decision about this, about this amendment?
It's not a question-and-answer time. It's, you get to have your three minutes and you can state it.
Okay. We can't afford delay.
Rick Stevens, your next.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we got you, I'm sorry. Jim Cassidy.
Gentlemen, I'll be brief. I appreciate earlier hearing of your concern, due diligence that you're taking for the healthcare of the residents of Lee County. I certainly hope you extend that concern and due diligence to what comes to Amendment Four. We're going to have an amendment, this proposed amendment is going to strip away and take away parental rights. Parents will no longer have consent, okay, with their child, with their daughter, is going to have an abortion. This is the only state, this one state goes through, throughout the United States, no minor can have surgery without parental consent. If this goes through, it's going to change everything. You're going to have parents finding their daughters or teenage daughters dead in their bed, okay, because of the abortion they had the previous day that parents never gave their consent to. The residents of Lee County deserve better. And we're asking you, okay, to take that healthcare that you're concerned about, and I really believe is genuine, and extend it to Amendment Four. And please come out and vote as early as possible. Vote no on it. Send that message to the residents of Lee County and to the state that you will not put up with this type of basically current murder that's going to happen within Lee County. Thank you, gentlemen. God bless you.
Okay. Up next is Catherine Miller and Tara Jenner will be next.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. And I think we can still legally say gentlemen, right? Or do we have to say persons now? I am requesting that this county commission would make the decision to support a no vote on Amendment Four. And primarily because it is so poorly written and that's giving them the benefit of a doubt. Intentionally misleading would be more correct. Because if we learned anything from the Roe v. Wade era, we learned that viability can be defined many different ways. We learned that mother's health could be defined, not her life, but her financial well-being. We learned that healthcare provider could be a CNA. I just recently had surgery and the CNAs were wonderful, but do I want them performing an abortion on someone? Absolutely not. They are not qualified, at the very least, but do we want to see them performing abortions at all? That's another whole story. And finally, the parental notification, you know, that is so misleading. People will think that means parental consent and it doesn't. You know, if you are going to get foreclosed by the bank, they're going to notify you, but they're not asking your permission. And parental notification is a far cry from parental consent. But the way it is written, it's written to deceive the average person, to deceive someone just looking at that, "Oh, well, that means parental consent." No, it doesn't. And the viability issue is very near and dear to me. Having worked with women in crisis pregnancies for forty-seven years, I will tell you, I have seen babies born at twenty weeks gestation and survive and be perfectly healthy after a period of time in the NICU. So who's going to determine viability? And unless they become more distinct in their language, I think we have to vote no. No, this is not something we would even consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Dennis Excrit. Excrit? Julie McDonald will be after that. I'm sorry, Tara Jenner was next. I jumped the card. Sorry, Tara.
Tara Jenner, and today I'm here as the vice chair of the Lee County GOP to remind each and every one of you who I understand are registered Republicans that the Republican Party of Florida on the tenth of February at their annual meeting actually filled out and signed a resolution against Amendment Four stating that it was overly broad and unclear in its nature. This particular resolution is drafted in such a way that it specifically is done to be overdraw, overbroad and convoluted. It is done specifically to confuse people and take away rights because that is the goal here. I'd like to read to you the very first portion of this, the actual amendment itself. This part is the only part that is clear. "No law shall prohibit, penalize, delay, or restrict abortions." You can stop there because everything after that has no definitions, no clarity, and no information to give guidance or guidelines to anybody. But guess what? Our state legislators will not be able to restrict abortions or have any laws that prohibit, penalize, delay, or restrict it. It's absolutely ludicrous. Those people that are even pro-abortion or pro-choice, whichever way you want to describe it, should be offended by the open-ended language of this amendment. You can drive a truck through this thing. There are more laws on the books protecting eagles' eggs, suckling pigs, and in our constitution here in Florida, including suckling pigs, protection for the treatment of racing greyhounds than there will be for young women and vulnerable women and little girls who may be subject to abuse or mistreatment or trafficking that will prevent them from being able to have any kind of consent from a parent or oversight by a physician, healthcare provider, a waiting period, heartbeat, ultrasound, you name it. It'll all be gone. And there are so many people that are in favor of this amendment that are lying through their teeth and saying, "Oh, it will stop people from being able to have an abortion if they've been a victim of incest or rape, if the mother's going to die, blah, blah, blah." It's about to hokum. It's in our current law. Those are already in place. They're there. We need to speak out affirmatively and remind people what the current law actually says and we are looking to you to give guidance to our community so that when they look at this amendment, they do so informed about the language, the intent, and how it's going to ultimately be executed. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I look forward to seeing that document.
Dennis Excrit is next. Please correct me when you come up. I'm sure that's wrong. And Julie McDonald will be after that. He's not here? Okay. Julie, come on up.
Good morning, what's left of it. My name is Julie McDonald. I moved to Florida twenty-five years ago and I attend church here in Lee County at Faith Assembly of God. I lead a Bible study called Surrendering the Secret to Help Post-Abortive Women Grieve and Heal From the Pain and Heartbreak of a Past Abortion. The Bible says, "Rescue those who are unjustly sentenced to die; save them as they stagger to their death. Don't excuse yourself by saying, 'Look, we didn't know.' For God understands all hearts and He sees you. He who guards your soul knows you knew. He will repay all people as their actions deserve." That's why I'm addressing you today. God has called me here today to oppose Amendment Four and to give testimony to the truth. You see, I'm a post-abortive woman and I know all too well what it's like to have an abortion. It's traumatic. I deeply regret aborting my child at a Planned Parenthood facility in New York many years ago. Planned Parenthood happens to be one of the sponsors of Amendment Four. I'm sorry. And they've been terminating pregnancies since the nineteen-seventies. That's over sixty million lives lost, including my child's earthly life. The sponsors of Amendment Four do not want you to know the truth. They don't want you to know that life is miraculous and precious. Fetal development has been well documented over the years through many scientific advances such as ultrasound technology. Today, we know that at seven days, the new life has developed its own blood cells. At twenty-four days, the heart has regular beats. At forty-two days, brainwaves are detectable. At six weeks, at fifty-six days, all organs are functioning. At the eleventh and twelfth weeks, the baby recoils from pain. That's four months. At thirteen weeks, the baby's sex, male or female, is identifiable. At twenty-four weeks, the child can survive birth. That's six months. An Amendment Four will allow abortion at six months after the baby has a heartbeat. Brainwaves are detectable and can feel pain or worse yet, maybe all the way to full term if it passes. We don't know what to expect because this amendment is so vague and that's dangerous. One of our prominent founding fathers, Thomas Jefferson, recognized that, quote, "All tyranny needs to gain a foothold is for people of good conscience to remain silent." I pray, you sirs, the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County are of good conscience and I respectfully request you to stand up with me and oppose Amendment Four. Please honor our women, children, and almighty God by supporting the resolution opposing Amendment Four. And on a personal note, please don't New York my Florida. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Kristy Vigley?
She left.
She left? Okay. Tom Askel? I'm sorry?
Gary.
Oh, you spoke. Okay. Joyce Campana.
Joyce Campana. I'm here to ask you to do your jobs and I'm not sure you have any power over Amendment Four, the wording of Amendment Four, or changing Amendment Four. If I recall, a meeting or two ago, the county attorney said, "You have no control over that now." I want you to represent the entire county and I don't think a small discussion on Amendment Four is representative of all the beliefs in this county. I am not in favor of you going the extra step of doing a resolution opposing Amendment Four because I don't think your resolution's going to outline all the issues that were presented here. Maybe it will. I haven't seen it. There may be some people in this large county of Lee County that don't agree with the voices that were presented here. And in my opinion, in terms of the role of your jobs, you will not be representing them. If you wanted to comment on the writing of the content of the amendment, that all should have been put out in whatever, way back when it was being presented. As a matter of fact, I think it was litigated, so I'm sure greater minds than us here even discussed the wording. So, in conclusion, I would say, I'm asking you to remember you represent, one, all of the county, and, two, you don't have any control over it as a body. On Election Day in November, everybody, everybody in the room, please go and vote and exercise your right. I'm in favor of that, whether you're for the amendment or against it. Vote, but not a resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Up next is Guy Matthew. I believe that might be wrong, but correct me, sir, when you come up. I believe that might be wrong, but correct me, sir, when you come up.
Correct pronunciation, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, commissioners. I recommend a no vote on Amendment Four and request your support. Laws are intended to give clarity and guidance to government, to governance. The amendment is so vague as to ensure constitutional chaos. It will promote confusion at the expense of clarity and healthcare. The negative effect of this ill-conceived amendment will flow down to all levels of government, from state to county to city. That's why I recommend that you vote no. If I could just take one more moment to quote from one of our founding fathers, James Madison, author of the U.S. Constitution, he said, and this is in Federalist 10, "The instability, injustice, and confusion introduced into the public councils have in truth been the mortal diseases under which popular governments have everywhere perished." It will affect Lee County. It will affect everyone's lives. Please vote no. Thank you.
Germain Henderson. Okay, Scott Baer?
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners. I was here last week. I'm gonna repeat a few things I said, but say a few new things, too. I am here as the CEO of the largest group of pregnancy resource centers in the state of Florida, but I'm here as a Florida resident, and I want to kind of counter what was just said before. You have an obligation, right, to educate people, especially when a law, in this case, Amendment to the Constitution, would prevent all future laws from being enacted by duly-elected officials. Many past elected, I'm sorry, many past laws would be gone, right? Many of the things that are in place by duly-elected officials would be gone. Rather than go through each one, I'm gonna use my time to do a few more things. One is, I'm gonna thank the women who already spoke, who have had an abortion experience. Your decision to help educate people, as she said, you have no impact on the wording of the resolution, right? It's 34 words of deception. You can help educate people about that, to protect women like this. In my role, I'm on the front lines, and I see women every day, some with two, three, four, uh, former abortions, and they finally found us. And I've never seen a woman before who regretted the decision to have the baby. I've seen thousands of women who, who regret the abortion. And so when we think about what this amendment would do, there's also the reality of chemical abortion. Now, I think this will be a later topic to discuss before the commission. There's many reasons why it's being harmful to women. It's four times more harmful than surgical abortion. We have women right now in their dorm rooms taking the abortion pill. We had a client just a few months ago who had 46 abortion pills in her room. Her friend got pregnant, and she said, take one of these. These women are being harmed. They're going to the hospitals, and they chalk it up as a miscarriage, or they don't tell the woman about the chemical abortion reality. That's something we need to face. We don't need less regulation around abortion, and that's just one example. I would also encourage you in the wording, as you look to the resolution, this amendment by its very nature is unconstitutional, right? We have, the Florida State Constitution in Section Two protects all persons, which was already defined by every embryologist that I know at fertilization, but more importantly, the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. No law, no state, sorry, self-deprives any person from life, liberty, or the protection of property and due process under the law. So that's your encouragement here, is to put in the resolution something that is very law by its nature. This amendment is unconstitutional. I would also just echo in my remaining time here that I also am from New York, and I would say, I'll say also, don't New York my Florida. I can say that. We, we would be on par with New York and California, also North Korea, Cuba, and China for the most abortion, pro-abortion state in the nation and the world. Thank you.
Ryan Kennedy.
Thank you, commissioners. I was here last week, and I just want to first start off by thanking you for your commitment to try to get a resolution put forward and hopefully supported by all of you gentlemen on the commission. Resolutions have been passed all across Florida on this topic, different localities, including closest to us in Collier County, which it passed unanimously there. So there definitely is a precedent for, for doing that. And I would just echo that time is of the essence to get the word out about the information related to Amendment Four. So I would just encourage you, as you're working through that process, to get this resolution put on your agenda as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Marsha Ellis.
Oh, thank you. So I do have a fact sheet that I would like to share, as well as an email that has been circulating. I'm going to just hand that over if you would get those out. So, as I mentioned earlier, Marsha Ellis, for the record, I have been following this agenda very closely because I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to be able to deal with the important government business that is before you. And I know that you, as elected officials, represent everyone in the community, just, not just the folks that you share common, common beliefs with, right? Whenever you are serving, you're serving us all. And clearly, you're all gentlemen, but I know that you're sensitive to the issues that relate to women as well. So I appreciate that. I, I want to state that the fact sheet that I've made available is an educational piece that has been prepared by the League of Women Voters that is not taking a position, just presenting information, including the ballot language, because there, we have heard a lot of misinformation about the topic of, most specifically, viability, which is defined in Florida State Statute 29 under Public Health, Chapter 390, with clarity and in the fact sheet that I shared with you. I want to state that I believe that all Floridians do deserve the freedom to make personal medical decisions that are free of government intrusion. And I know that being free of government intrusion is a recurring theme that all of you guys stand proudly behind. I would like to say that also, we have a right to privacy because we're being exposed to a lot of cringey stories that I'm personally uncomfortable with being shared in a forum that I believe has important matters to take on, such as the flooding our community is experiencing, or interruptions in services that the community has because we're facing things like storms moving into the region. Ultimately, this is a citizens initiative. Each of you will get one vote, just as everyone else who's registered to vote here in Lee County. I don't think it's proper to exert your influence and try to pressure other people to, to vote in a way that, that, that you have personally chose. I believe that we need to have a separation and respect people's privacy when it comes to our, our medical decisions. You can't walk a mile in someone else's shoes, quite honestly. And I'm just asking for that respect and that you review the fact sheet to take a look a little bit more specifically at the issue of viability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, I just have a single name here. Please state your full name.
Hi, my name is Pam Kearns, and I'm not here for a lot of the other things, but this is, I'm here for...
Public Matters Later?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we do that? You didn't have anything marked, so I...
Well, I wasn't sure what to put on the card.
Yes.
So this is for the Ordinance 2309. So should I wait to do that?
Yeah, we'll do that later.
Okay.
At the Public Matters. Thank you.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll get you back up.
All right.
Debbie Healy?
Good morning. Actually, I think it's a good brunch. I am Debbie Healy. I'm a Lee County resident, and I just want to thank you all for, for being just ardent in what you're doing and just standing strong. And I apologize, I was given information by your office, Chairman Greenwell, that you all had the resolution that we were proposing for Lee County. I talked to Stacy on July the 16th. She said she had it. I called back a couple of days later and it moved on. So I apologize if you didn't get it, but I thought you had it, and I'm gonna submit it again. I also have the resolution from Collier County, just to kind of coincide with the resolution that we're presenting to you. And I ask you, and, and I'm talking to you from, as an RN, as a mom, as a grandmother, you know, you know, this nice lady talked about keeping government out of our healthcare. Well then, why are we paying $400 million, taxpayer dollars, to Planned Parenthood for the largest abortion clinic in this country? You can't have it both ways. You can't have it, you know, government in your healthcare for one thing, but not in another thing. And I agree with you. These women that had their testimonies about having an abortion...
Please direct it to the board, not, not the crowd.
Sorry, 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 sorry. These women that shared their testimony about having abortions, it is hard to hear. It is heartbreaking to hear, and this is what we want to do by saying no to Amendment Four so that more women don't have to go through that, so our moms, our daughters, our children don't have to go through that. So I'm asking you, please, consider the resolution, no on Amendment Four, just like this man over here is standing there, he gets up every day, puts that uniform on, leaves his house, and he comes here to help us, prevent us from having harm. I'm looking at you all as leaders for Lee County. Please do the same thing. Protect Lee County residents, present and future residents, from harm, and that's what this Amendment Four is going to do. So I appreciate all that you do, and thank you.
Julie Millam?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Julie Millam. I am a Lee County resident, and I'm representing myself. Don't be fooled, this is not about women's healthcare. Amendment Four is a dangerous attack on unborn women and parents, is an extreme attempt for abortion on demand and to eliminate reasonable health standards for pregnant women. As I testified at the last meeting, the reason that out-of-staters are trying to come in here and backdoor this amendment into our state is money. There's nothing more, this is nothing more than a money ploy by these evil profiteers who engage, engage in the big-money marketing of baby parts, and this is the truth behind it. As I reported in the last meeting, in 1996, partial-birth abortion was fully exposed by life dynamics. Each member of the House and Senate of the U.S. was given a 320-page exposé of clear evidence by Senator Henry Hyde, and you can read about that in the book Line Five by Mark Crutcher. This gruesome book is available for your reading pleasure at Amazon and other bookstores. At any time, profit numbers were at reaching a billion dollars at that time. The profit is huge. I have added into the record here some real evidence that Mark Crutcher came upon to do his exposé, which is a fees for services for baby parts. This is 1996. At that time, you could buy a spinal column for $150, a brain for $500, bone marrow. In here is order forms that were exposed from people, and even down to the FedEx receipts that they, they engage in this. That's what they're bringing, want to bring it into our state. Just in the past year, Planned Parenthood was again exposed by even the liberal media on tape, up close and personal, admitting to selling baby parts. Not to mention de facto, that is the definition of murder, to lie in wait and premeditate. Additionally, there's never another reason for partial-birth abortion, as a child can survive outside the womb. This barbaric procedure is where babies are torn apart, they can feel pain, endangers the woman, and if Amendment Four passes your desk, that means almost anyone can perform it, endangering women's lives as well. The Lord said in his word, "I knit you together in your mother's womb." The Lord hates the shedding of innocent blood. Don't erase parental rights. Don't subject women to dangerous, unregulated medical procedures. Don't allow young girls to be pressured into abortion and live the rest of their lives in regret, as you have heard. And don't call down on yourself the judgment of the Lord. Respectfully, Julie Millam. And I'm gonna put this into the record so you can see through.
Thank you. At that time, that concludes all the cards, I believe, I have on it. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? I missed you. I, I don't know what, if I, come on up.
Good morning again, Dr. Edward Grass. When you come last in the program, most of your thunder's been taken away, so I can't express more eloquently than what the folks ahead of me have done in, in their presentations. But one thing that hasn't been mentioned is, in addition to this resolution that you're considering condemning Amendment Four, it's also educational because it will focus attention of the citizens of this city and this county on what Amendment Four is. Everybody I talk to either doesn't know or they're confused because of the wording. Last week in Florida politics, they did a survey in Orlando, and 68% of the people surveyed said they would vote for Amendment Four. George Soros, Open Society, and all of the members of his committees and, and the ACLU and Planned Parenthood are pouring millions into this state. Did you know, we talked to people who collected signatures for the petition, which achieved the 800,000 goal to get this on the ballot in November. Those petitioners were paid $50 an hour by George Soros constituents to collect those. So that's what we're up against. This is not a battle that's won here in Lee County. This is statewide. And every time a county commission, or a city council, or a board of governance of any municipality says to condemn Amendment Four, that helps strengthen us in that goal. I want to thank you for committing to this. This is a monumentous thing that you're doing. You, in contradiction to the previous speaker, you have to direct the conservative constituents of this county in the way they attack this amendment. And that's, I want to thank you for the ability to stand here and, and present this to you.
All right, thank you. I have one more card I found. Sorry, Andrew Sun, come on up. I apologize, I had your card in a different pile. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. I won't be able to be at your August 20th meeting, so I did want to make sure I had the opportunity to speak out. We've heard from many speakers about issues with Amendment Four, the lie that it is returned to Roe v. Wade, there's a lie that it solves this question once and for all, the lie that it leaves the issues to women and their doctors, the lie that it preserves parental rights. Unfortunately, there are too many lies in this amendment for me to discuss them all with you today, but there is an important one that I don't think has been addressed and I think is worth talking about. And that's the lie that by addressing this resolution, you're forcing your religion on the residents of this county. While I share the views of many of the people who have spoken, that human life is created in God's image, has inherent worth, and should be defended, you don't have to come to this conclusion through religious views alone. John Stuart Mills, a professed agnostic, skeptic of Christianity, described as the saint of rationalism, theorized in his harm principle, which is foundational to our system of government and philosophical liberalism, in that he argues the only purpose for which power can be rightfully exercised is to prevent harm to others. Commissioners, abortion is the most egregious of harm. It is the taking of a distinct, intrinsically valued, innocent human life, a blight on our nation. So whether you reach these conclusions by divine leading or rational thought, I'm left with only one conclusion: prevent harm, preserve life, condemn Amendment Four. Thank you.
Thank you. At that time, that concludes the cards. Anyone else wish to speak on this item at this time? Okay, you say none, I will close public comment. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Greenwell, a second by Commissioner Wayne. Do we have any further discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment for the few speakers. I think there's a little confusion here. So, we've obtained a copy of the resolution that passed, but for us to actually legally to do this right, what we're doing today, we're having this public discussion. Since our last meeting, we don't get to talk about this, so he can't just come give me an email from his office or, so we have to actually ask our staff to get the certified copy from the Collier County. We can't provide a document word by word based upon something we get off of copies from the hands of, so we have to just instruct our staff, as we're doing today, to get the certified copy from Collier County. That language be changed to be adapted to Lee County. Doesn't be saying, we don't do everything the same word by word as Collier County or any other county, and then bring it back to us, then we have public comment and we vote on it. That's the process we have to go through here. It's unfortunate, but we're under sunshine, and we follow record also. To, for us to obtain a copy, we can't just take something off the street and use that to create a legal document here in Lee County. So that's the process we work on there, and that's why we're doing this today. Heard my colleague today, we support the coming back to us is majority of the vote of the board, but it's, that's the process we have to go through.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, for that. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, we have the motion to approve by Commissioner Greenwell, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Okay, we have the motion to approve by Commissioner Greenwell, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Any further discussion? Any objections? Seeing no objection, motion moves five to zero. That concludes Commissioner's items. So, at this time, we will move to committee appointments. Commissioner Hammond, do you have any committee appointments?
I do, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I have four reappointments and one new appointment. I'd like to reappoint Bob Knight to the Executive Regulatory Oversight Committee, Thomas Leonard to the Land Development Code Committee, Jennifer Sapon to the Land Development Code Committee, Amy McLaughlin to the Community Action Agency, and I'd like to make a new appointment of John Gardner to the CDBGDR Affordable Housing Evaluation Committee.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Wayne. Any objections? Five to zero. Okay, Commissioner Penegras?
Yes, I have a new reappointment of Adam Knight to the Historical Preservation Board, reappointment of Randy Chris to LDC, and reappointment of Christopher Scott to the LDC also.
Second.
Okay, and the motion from Mr. Penegras, second from Commissioner Wayne. Any objections? No objections, it's five to zero. Okay, Commissioner Sandelli, any?
Mr. Chairman, I've got two. I've got a reappointment, William Price for the Land Development Code, and James Smith for the Vice of Pedestrian Committee.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Sandelli, also. The objections, five to zero. Okay, Commissioner Wayne.
I have two reappointments and one new appointment. The first one is Samuel Baker to the Executive Regulatory Oversight Committee, and Sharon Murphy to District Eight Health Planning Council. They're both reappointments, and a new appointment, Community Action Advisory Board, that's Mary Anspie.
Second. Okay, a motion to approve. We have a second, no objections, five to zero. Commissioner Greenwell, I have three reappointments. Veronica Martin to Land Development Code Committee, Bill DeDuge to Executive Regulatory Oversight Committee, and Al Corntone to Land Development Code. I'll make a motion. Have a second? Okay, we have a second from, a motion and a second from Commissioner Hammond, a motion from Commissioner Greenwell. Any objections? Saying none. Now, we, that concludes Commissioner's appointments. County manager items. Mr. Horner, do you have any county manager items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items today. The first is an update on the National Flood Insurance Program. As you know, we have been working with FEMA since March regarding this issue, and following their potential retrograde of our CRS. We currently are expecting a letter from FEMA as part of the process that they have to go through, and timelines that they have to meet. They will be sending a letter to residents that fall under the National Flood Insurance Program. That letter may be a bit concerning to our residents, as it states that we may be put on probation, potentially losing the CRS rating, which is, could be up to 25%, that any policyholder would have a $50 surcharge on their policy, and then, through the probation process, would no longer be able to have a NFIP policy. That is worst-case scenario. We are still working with FEMA. We have till November 18th to complete a plan that works on any concerns that FEMA has. We will be sending out letters to all residents that fall within the NFIP policyholder area, or policyholders, to assure them that the county continues to work on this process. We will continue to work with FEMA. We feel very confident that we will be able to keep our CRS rating. FEMA has been a good partner through this process, and they continue to work diligently with us. We meet with them regularly, at least three to four times a week, and our staff is working with them daily. So, just to hopefully help with some of the concerns, when that letter comes out, we will send a letter prior to FEMA's going out. Our second update, unless there's any questions regarding FEMA.
Any questions?
Thank you. And our second update will be Tropical Storm Hurricane Debbie update, and I'd like to ask Mr. Van Abis to present that.
Commissioners, good afternoon. I will try and be brief, since you've got workshop here coming up. I want to just provide you with a brief overview of Tropical Storm Debbie, which passed off our coast on Saturday, and then became Hurricane Debbie, making landfall yesterday in the Big Bend area of Florida. As you're aware, we activated the EOC on Friday after monitoring the storm for several days. That was a Level Two activation, where we were continuing to monitor the storm, but also enhance our communication and information dissemination with our partners, and ensure that we were in a good position to coordinate with any of those partners or stakeholders, should we experience impacts. And while we didn't experience any of the significant winds associated with the storm, which typically leads to power outages and other catastrophic issues, we did have coastal surge and flooding rains, as predicted by the National Hurricane Center and the National Weather Service. That led to coordination with the Department of Transportation, with Natural Resources, and we also provided some enhanced fire and emergency medical support through our public safety partners. Most of those roadway and flooding issues were cleared up into Sunday evening, but we did experience some subsequent issues yesterday, as you saw here downtown, and continue to work with all of our partners. DCD and solid waste, we're out doing surveys as soon as possible to be able to identify any of the damaged areas, and they have just identified over 200 properties that were impacted by the storm. Solid waste leadership advises that most of the debris that was observed is horticultural and can be picked up with routine collection pickup. We had enhanced communication with the board, as you saw, weekend, and we have also worked with our county departments and the legislative delegation very closely throughout the storm. Yesterday at 5:00 PM, we took the EOC back to a Level Three activation, which is our standard kind of monitoring posture, but we continue to watch for potential impacts, especially with the amount of rainfall that we experienced with the storm. In fact, this morning, Natural Resources and the County Manager's Office have been talking with Benita Springs about the Imperial River, which is a 10.9. 11 is flood stage, minor flood stage for the river. We'll continue to work very closely with Benita Springs and Natural Resources to ensure that there are no other actions that need to be taken down in that area over the next few days. Just a couple of quick thank-yous. I want to thank the County Manager's Office for their support, as well as our emergency management team who worked throughout the weekend, bless you. And John Schultz, who completed his first EOC activation as our chief of emergency management. I want to thank our other divisions of public safety, our other county departments, and of course, all of our partners and stakeholders across the community. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ben, could you go into more detail about Fort Myers Beach, and the damage that may have been inflicted out there, and kind of what status is currently?
Sure. So the town has been working very closely with the EOC to identify any of those damaged properties. They have been out doing assessments as well. Of course, you know, the county has responsibility for some of the infrastructure on Fort Myers Beach, but I know the county manager was on the phone multiple times Sunday, as they were experiencing the worst of the flooding Sunday afternoon, to be able to share resources and coordinate any response that's necessary. Right now, they're still going through the process of identifying any of those damages, and what actions may need to be taken.
Okay. And then, could you talk a little bit about what happened in downtown with the, you know, obviously, we had significant flooding along First Street there, at the base of the Edison Bridge, causing the closure to the bridge. What caused that, and what do you think? Could you elaborate more on that situation?
Sure. So we can, there's a couple of different tools that we use to be able to monitor the water levels. One of the anomalies with the storm is that we saw very high levels further up the Kluh Sahachi River than we normally see. And so while the coastal tidal gauges seem to go back to normal levels yesterday, the gauges here downtown at the yacht basin that monitor the Kluh Sahachi River remain well above normal. And so with the additional, there's a little bit of additional rainfall that moved through, and between that, and the elevated water levels and high tide, we had the additional flooding. I know the city is working on a long-term plan to try and address that, but that's something, again, that we continue to monitor.
Good deal, thank you. You know, Board, I think we've seen several instances of flooding in this area now, and even Fowler Street gets flooded quite a bit, too. I wondered if, you know, Mr. Horner, maybe, Mr. County Manager, could you talk to us a little bit about, is there something damaged in the system that needs to be fixed here? What does this long-term plan look like to alleviate this flooding? I mean, that's, a lot of cars that need to get through this area. If there's infrastructure that needs to be fixed, well, that's kind of what we do. What are your thoughts on this?
The city of Fort Myers is doing a stormwater study, CDBGDR dollars, so hopefully, they'll be able to come to some conclusions from there and what to do in the future.
Has it started already, or?
I don't believe that study has started yet. It's just awarded.
Okay. And so then, basically, the study will take some time, and then it'll yield results, and then obviously, the fixes will take money and time?
Correct.
I mean, have we identified any short-term or temporary relief?
For the city, I can't answer anything related to the city. For the county, I can say that, you know, we continue to go out, DOT and Natural Resources goes out and does continual review of our water courses to ensure that they're not blocked, and to address any issues that we may have. When it comes to the city, that is a city responsibility. We would work with them. I know that Roland probably has some conversation with them, but as for us and any planning with the city itself, we do not have any.
So First Street, is that First Street where I'm talking about, at the base of the bridge there, is that city, or is that us? Or is that state?
I believe that's the city.
Okay. I mean, Commissioners, I'd love to just share my thoughts, that, you know, we kind of have seen this happen enough recently, and I would love to identify some of these hotspots, and look for any kind of temporary fixes. If it's a partnership with a city, then let's partner with the city. If it's not, then that's fine, too. If it's all us, then let's work on it, too. But, you know, I just, I think about the actual drivers, I think about the people here in these neighborhoods, and what they must deal with when these roads get covered by a couple feet of water. I know it drains off quickly, and the bridge is back open today, and things are going to be fine today, but, you know, we, if there's something going on with the system, that we could work together to try to alleviate or improve, even in the short term, while the longer-term studies get done, I'd like to look into that. That's my thought.
Commissioner Penegras?
Commissioner Hammond, thank you for bringing this up. Like Ben said, this has been going on. I worked for the city 40 years ago, and I can tell you, from my first day working for the city in 1983, it was yearly, we would direct the traffic of First and Fowler, First to Palm, and because of this water issue. Through the years, working with different administrations there, they did do some improvements at Palm Avenue, they redid Palm and Rhode Island, they brought up, just by Wink TV there, Billy's Creek, they did some improvements there, they closed off Palm to make it one-way. Through the years, though, when the FDOT put the new bridge in, the northbound flyover, they did do some improvements there, but that area between Seaboard to Fowler Street is kind of like New Orleans. It's four inches lower than the rest of that city right there. And when they get the tidal surge, it backs up in Billy's Creek, and I know, working with Al Abdo, who was the Public Works Director before Zaid was at the City of Morris, and then Zaid later on, 20 years ago, that was something that we had to deal with every year, just normal summer rains. We actually bought vehicles, the police department, just to go there and rescue people. We had like a swamp buggy type of vehicles, kind of like the Sherp Ford used after the beach, to go on the Palm, Rhode Island, Michigan area, Michigan Avenue there, to recover people. Vehicles stall out. Fowler Street from Edison down to the river is five inches lower than the rest of that area there, so that area between Market, Lafayette, that area always backs up more, too. You have those water inlet coming in through the outlets, because all those drains drain to the river, so it backs up, the drains comes up, you have the street flow, everything from Grand Avenue flows east to Fowler Street, so you have that sheet flow from Evans to back to Fowler Street. The city can't provide that to us. I know they have some long-term fixes, which also include water utilities off of Huff Street in Woodford. Four years ago, the city revisited that, they didn't have the funding then, it was like a $42 million project, I believe, to redo the water off of Huff Street, Woodford, and Huff Street, yeah, and MLK there. So I'm not sure where they are with it now. I know when the Capitol built their building, they actually put $7 million of infrastructure to that block there, to provide their own infrastructure and water utilities. So, it's a long-term fix for the city. I know they're looking at it from Fowler Street to Seaboard, I just don't know surely where they're at there. It's been a city issue for many, many, many decades, they still deal with it today, and they dealt with it yesterday. Unfortunately, the other bridge being closed, it was a traffic nightmare for everybody. It's just the way the water flows in that bowl there, and that's why you're seeing, you know, a lot of the business area moving to other areas, because they don't want to get flooded out again. But when they built the new condos there along the river, they dealt with that, they did some improvements there, First and Palm, First and Cranford, but it wasn't enough to keep that water still in one of the lower areas, which is First Street.
Chairman, if I may? I think that's really good history, and honestly, just important information for us. I think that almost lends even more credence to the argument that maybe we could come together with the city of Fort Myers to try and petition the legislature for some dollars to get this fixed, to get this area, you know, revitalized, or get it fixed, get the drainage working again in this area. Because it sounds like if it's a year after year after year problem, and I do remember when I worked at Wink TV as a kid, there was floods that would come through there and flood all the cars out in the parking lot, right? So it is an area that we've known, it sounds like for decades now, is a trouble spot for flooding. You know, maybe it's time to look at a collaborative effort between the state, the city, the county, to try and hopefully get this area improved, and really, look at other flooding spots, too, in the county, and hit those. I mean, I think those are the things that people look for us, you know, they're certainly not, the private sector's not going to fix that themselves. Those are the things that are a role of government that we should look at. So, that's my two cents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I appreciate both Commissioner Penegras and Commissioner Hammond's comments. I think, you know, what we're implying is certainly looking at deficiencies and/or enhancements we could do to the stormwater system, to make sure we don't run into these issues. And where we have, you know, obviously, areas of grave deficiency or the flood, we need to at least identify those and come up with some type of plan. How do we do it? Because it's not only Fort Myers, Cape, there was an awful lot of places flooded. So, again, I just think, holistically, we need to look at stormwater, and where our deficiencies are, and are there any opportunities, so when we go up to the legislature, we can work in harmony with the other cities. Thank you.
Ben, the flooding, I talked to the, you know, the mayor over the weekend, the sheriff down there, Sunny, the beach, the water on the roadway, was that storm surge coming over the beach, or was it mostly, excuse me, rainwater collection coming back on the road?
Ben, if you don't mind, I'd like to answer that. I was at the beach when it flooded.
Good, please.
It was water that came up from the beach and the Bay Area back there, that basically inundated the whole island right there. And quite shocking, actually, the water got about 30 inches deep.
That's why you were on the talk radio show, though.
I was, and I'm glad I drive a truck, because if not, I'm not sure, I'd have got home very, very early. But yes, it actually came all the way over. It was, we had quite a surge at the beach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Horner, is that complete?
We have no additional items.
County manager items, okay. That concludes County commander items. County attorney items, Mr. Wells?
Nothing further today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So that concludes County Attorney items. Public presentation of matters. I do have some cards. I will start with Pam. Please state your name again, please. Thank you.
Hi. That's all right. My name is Pam Kearns, and my husband and I own a window company. We've been in business since 2008. He has a finished carpentry license with Lee County. There's been a lot of miscommunication throughout the years, as far as the license itself, and doing away with the license. Nobody's really communicating with the license holders. It's been chaos, to be honest. The governor has extended the county licenses another year until 2025, June 30th. Cape Coral has abided by that. However, Lee County has enacted Ordinance 2309, which grandfathered in some licenses, but it did not grandfather in my husband's license, which enables us to install windows and doors. Entry doors, sliding glass doors, windows, like I say, we've been in business since 2008 with a county license. At one point, he was trying to go for his glass and glazing license, which doesn't really fit into what we do exactly, but I guess Governor DeSantis extended the licenses another year, to give this DBPR a chance to come up with comparable licenses for the ones they were not grandfathering in at the county level. The problem is, Ordinance 2309 came into effect, and our The problem is, Ordinance 2309 came into effect and our, my husband's license was invalid, they would not renew it as of June 30th of this year. Ironically enough, DBPR didn't come out with the comparable state-certified window and door installation license until July 1st. He has applied for the license and applied for an exemption for the test. Like I say, we have been in business since '08, he has 28 years worth of experience prior to him getting his county license. We do a lot of work for Habitat, for Humanity, we have a great reputation in town, built, it's just a small, family-owned business. We don't advertise, it's word of mouth, referrals, repeat customers, that sort of thing, and this is jeopardizing our business. We can't get a straight answer from DBPR whether or not they are going to exempt him from the test. Like I said, in between the hurricane and everything else going on, we're extremely busy. He started studying for his glass and glazing test, and then the codes all, all changed. So now he's got to go out and buy all new books, but now they have a window and door license available as of July 1st through the state. Like I said, he applied for the license and exempt, and applied for the exemption for the test, but we haven't heard anything back from them. Meanwhile, we have permits, one in particular, that has already been approved, the windows are in back order, and we have more jobs waiting for us in Lee County. We don't have a problem in Cape Coral. They extended our license, which will give us time to get the, for my husband to get the state license.
All right, thank you, Pam. You're out of time, but I'll tell you what, send my office an email.
I, okay, I've emailed lots of people and not had any kind of answers.
Okay, send my office, because now you brought it to my attention, and I will look into it for you.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you.
Appreciate it.
William Schottmeyer.
I just want to say real quick, for the record, Chairman, I was contacting irrigation members this morning, the same thing happened with irrigation, they were not licensed.
For the record, Willie Joe Schott Miller, not Meyer.
On number nine, community development, I'm glad to see that, how the wording is, structures, well, you know, interest, interest the community, be rehabbed, rebuilt, and re, rehabbed and for the good of the community. We have a lot of places that have historical value that have been torn down, and if we could save something for the next generations to admire, then that's good, like that ordinance in the state. But that's all I would like to comment on until the agenda, you call on the public interest on the non-agenda items. I've got some things that I want to address.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the long wait. Norman Cannon. Okay, Joyce Hannah.
I'll start with the item that I was raising before in the wrong place on the agenda, and that is, under the discussion of Lee Memorial, Lee Healthcare, you gentlemen were referring to a document with staff comments, and that was not online with the agenda that was made public. And I'd like to know why? Because you were discussing it at an open meeting, that should have been public information. So please put it out there, staff comments and all, so we can review it. The other item, and, and I was out looking at the agenda, I believe, last night, and I looked at it Monday night and it wasn't there either, so it's not there. I had the right date. The other item is, in regard to your workshop, you've got coming up this afternoon on the 2025 proposed budget. I see that online it has the 6% pay increase included, and I couldn't exactly discern how much more money there was that needed to be allocated for the difference between a 5% pay increase and a 6% pay increase. Somewhere along the line for the public presentations, could you please make a note of that? Because I can come here and ask that, but I can't really make sure I have the right answer. It looked like it was about $1 million, but I was looking at the information on the proposed budget off my phone, which gets really small. And the other item that I have in closing, I looked at the FEMA website update, thank you. However, it did look like FEMA already said we are on a three-year probation. They didn't, that letter that was out there almost read that way, so you are going to have a lot of confusion if they didn't say that. But I'm glad, right now, we have, or at least seem to have, our discount back. I think we need to let the public know what the plan is down the road and for future storms. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe Marcia Ellis.
Yep, thank you. Marcia Ellis, for the record. So I just want to take a moment today and say that I recognize what an important job that you guys are doing. You have a lot of responsibility on your shoulders for the community. You know, once again, out at Fort Myers Beach downtown, we saw, again, you know, the heavy burden that you guys carry on behalf of us all to deal with these events. And there is really no job that's more important than handling the debris after a storm has rolled through our area. And we were, that was referred to with the County Manager's items, talking about how the solid waste management, sort of doing the reconnaissance about what kind of materials are generated. And with that being said, I am very alarmed that in the future, our county could be represented by someone who has a history of dumping solid and hazardous waste into water bodies. And, and these aren't allegations, this is documented.
Mr. Chair.
This is documented in the Department of Environmental Protection.
Marcia, we're going to stop you there. Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Item, the item before us is something that we can do, the item in the future is for voters, in one breath, you know, we're asking for people to respect their opinion. Honestly, the item that you're referring to is not appropriate before the.
And so when.
Marcia, I'd like to speak with.
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Attorney, you recommend.
It also probably violates your rules of conduct for your board meetings where personal attacks are not permitted nor encouraged. As Commissioner Wayne aptly points out, this is citizens wishing to address the board on board matters. If the speaker could be instructed to confine her comments to matters over which you have control, that would be helpful.
Thank you. I will go out of my way, I have not mentioned anything. I'm raising concern for potential conflicts of interest regarding the way that debris is managed in our community, including if, if debris is dumped illegally, then it creates...
Mr. Chair, again, what we're going is way beyond the scope, and this may or may not be a person that gets in office, so I don't think this is germane to what our body's supposed to do.
So I'm hoping that in the future, that the management of debris is, is handled appropriately and responsibly. And what I'm saying is, I think, of importance for us to really look at that responsibility going forward, that practices in the handling of debris is done in a way that is fair for people who manage debris in, as a business, to not have, be undercut when tipping fees and proper disposal methods aren't adhered to. There, I think there's an important enforcement role, and I understand that there's scrutiny that is occurring, and I want to make sure that, that the reputation of Lee County continues to be respected and in the future, because the consequences on the folks in the community are dire. It, it does matter. It's not just a, you know, in terms of the environmental damage, but also the reputational damage and the impacts to other businesses that are behaving responsibly. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to bring it before you.
Any other comment at this time on public matters? Okay, saying none, I will close public matters presentation at this time of citizens. Okay, workshop update. Mr. Horner, can you give us a workshop update?
Yes, Mr. Chair, at 1:30, we have our second draft budget presentation at Advent East.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak on the workshop? Anyone in the committee want to speak on the workshop today? All right, I will close public comment. If there's no further business in front of us, we are adjourned.